Welcome, everybody. We appreciate everyone coming tonight. Just a couple of points of clarification before we have a reverence. This is a meeting that the public is welcome to attend. Hope they're here, anybody that wants to in person or online so that they can see the process. But this, we will not be taking public comment tonight in this meeting. This is for the board members to gather information and try to get prepared for our next board meeting, which is the eighth? Is February the eighth, and at which time there will be public comment taken. There was comment, public comments was taken at our last board meeting, but nobody showed or made any comments for that meeting. Let's have the reverence, Jason, then I'll go into a couple of other things, please. Jason Johnson's going to give our reverence.
Our dear, kind and gracious Father in Heaven, we come before thee this evening, grateful for the chance to be a part of this process, grateful for a chance to, to work with the students and youth of Hewinta County. We are grateful for the many wonderful stakeholders who have taken their time to lend us their voice, to assist us as we, as we, as a board and a school district and administration, try to make the best decisions for our education here in our, in our county. We're grateful for a wonderful place to live, for the moisture in which we've received. We'd ask thou please bless us, especially at this time as a community and especially the board this evening as they discuss the Friday schedule, that they will have the understanding and enlightenment that they need to, to lead and guide our school district and to make the choices that, that they have to make. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jason. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail because I think sometimes in the public, if you look at it at a glance, it looks like sometimes we don't take a lot of time in making the decisions and doing the things that this board does. So I want to explain what went on in this process just a tiny bit. First of all, the surveys went out long before Christmas and to different groups. And the board started receiving information on them surveys before the Christmas break. As things changed, as the surveys came in, so did the information that we had. It wa, it wasn't locked, and that's all that we had until at a different time it was updated. As the information come in, the, the information that the board members had has changed. And so every board member sat on the committee in one capacity of, or another. A lot of times, the superintendent and Dr. Lee stuck us on a committee where they knew maybe we wouldn't be the most comfortable on purpose to make us learn both sides of things as, as we, as we went along. And so we sat on, we sat on them committees, and there were, them committees, I tell you, there was people on there from all, all walks of life, I would say. Some that had really strong opinions that we needed to do this, and some that had real strong opinions that we needed to do that. Nonetheless, I think we all learned a lot serving on them committees. And we helped write the survey questions. We went through them one at a time. We asked them to take words out and to add words in, to try to make it, you know, you never have a survey that goes out that somebody doesn't say, well, they, they wrote, that's the wrong word. Is that the right word? They wrote this question to get the answer that they wanted. I promise you, that was not the case, in no circumstance. We have tried together every bit of viable information that we could for, for that. Therefore, that's part of the reason why the principals are here tonight, to talk to us a little bit about the needs of their, their schools. I can tell you that I have, I don't know how many hours. How many hours, Robin, have you spent in the survey? Denise? I don't, I don't either. It's a ton. I have read and studied every survey and read every comment. I promised, I made the commitment that I would do that, and I'm sorry that I did. Them comments after the first thirty get pretty repetitious. And then, and I bring this up for a reason. And then every once in a while, somebody decides to say something really nasty or cute about an administrator or a board or, or whatever. And the reason that I bring that up is, in life anymore, it seems like that a lot of stuff that control us takes place by our lawmakers. And as I read them comments, that, that person's, that, that pulled them stunts, opinion to me become null and void. And maybe they had something really good to say, but, you know, when you read a comment that says, "Well, the board president, he just, he's a stupid farm kid, and he only does what the superintendent wants him to do." Well, the rest of whatever he had to say, I discredited, or if he said it about one of my fellow board members, or one of you, or, or whatever. The reason I kind of bring that point up is, remember when you're writing them kind of things, that if you want your opinion to be taken into account, then we all have rights to our own opinions. And just like here tonight, we're not going to argue or, or get in a heated debate about one thing or another. We're going to hear each other's opinions, and we're going to learn, and we're going to gather information. Hopefully, we make, uh, it's not going to be an easy decision. Um, the surveys and stuff are, are split pretty, pretty evenly. Another point that I wanted to make in so doing that, there's a House bill in front of the House right now. And Robin, what, what is it that we're opposed to? House bill, what number?
Two fifteen?
Two fifteen. So I've been working on another bill that has nothing to do with the school district. So some, when I visited, I had a meeting with Senator Chu Saturday morning to discuss another matter. And he said, "Some of my fellow Republicans are being really ignorant when they're contacting their legislators and their representatives." Just remember that that doesn't get us anywhere. We got to have respect and respect to everybody's opinion. And, and so just remember that as you, as you go forward. Them people are, are elected, and when they get a comment of, of something like that, it kind of discredits the side that you're, you're arguing from, in my opinion. Superintendent, have I left? Have I give it a fair shake?
I, I think so, yeah, yeah, just, I,
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to go through a data protocol tonight. And as we go through it, just keep in mind that the board members have already put a lot of work into reading and understanding, trying, trying their best to understand the comments, the data. So if you feel like it's rushed, I, you know, it may, it may appear that way, but, but there's already been a lot of work done. The, the purpose of tonight, though, is, is, is to be able to collect and gather all of this so board members can hear what each other have to say about the data that they've reviewed. So, so bear with us as we move forward, and appreciate you being here.
Okay, thanks, Superintendent. Board members, anything else that anybody wants to add before we dive in and get started? Hearing none, we're going to tie and turn the time over to the superintendent. And we're going to do the principal and coordinator comments first. And we've got one principal that couldn't be here that sent in a written one. And so we'll turn the time over to him, and he can run that as, as he will, would like.
Okay, great. Thank you, President. So here's how we're going to do this, principals. We're going to start with our elementary schools, and we're going to go in alphabetical order. Actually, we'll start with Aaron. Aaron, I, I don't know how much this has to pertain to you. If you, if you don't want to speak, you don't have to. It's up to you. Uh, we'd love to hear from you. We're going to go in alphabetical order, except that I promised Denise that she could go first. Um, I know she has a, something she has to get to. So we'll start with Mazer, then we'll go in alphabetical order. Then we'll go to, to UMS, and then VMS, and then the high school. And we have some comments from Andy from the Alternative High School. So let's, uh, let's go in that order, okay? So are you gonna, are you, do you want to speak? It's up to you. Do you have anything to say, Aaron?
Principals, we're not being rude tonight, but I don't know about the other board members, but I'm going to take a few notes. Dr. Lee's is here trying to scribe for us and keep track of things. We're not being rude. Normally, we don't do that, but you guys are going to feed us so much information that we're going to, I'm going to do a little bit of note-taking.
And then, board members, if you have any questions for the principals, I think it would be appropriate, this, this is, I know it feels formal because we have microphones and we have an audience, but this is a work session. So if you have questions, feel free to, to ask questions, and, and then we'll just proceed. Um, we've asked principals to keep their comments to about three minutes, but if you have questions and it takes a little more than that, we're, we're okay. Okay? We're good. Aaron?
I will try to keep my, my comments from, as a parent, separate from my comments as an educator. So tonight, as I speak as an educator, I don't have a lot of, um, on-the-ground experience with this particular model for Friday in the preschool, but we have done something very similar for years in the preschool. And so I was excited to be able to try it as a district. Um, the opportunity, I think, could be to provide additional one-on-one or additional enrichment. I think in theory, it was a great idea. And I think, judging from what I gleaned from the feedback, the teachers feel better prepared for the, for the instruction they're able to give, but we're not getting the kids in the seats. And I think that's where the big concern comes in. So, um, I guess my feedback would be, I've seen it work well, but we have different, we have a different demographic and different students at our school. I've seen it work well in theory at the preschool, but I think there are some, some concerns specifically about attendance and the kids that need to be there for it to work as well as I think it could. That's just not happening, and I don't know where that, and it's, it's no fault. I'm not saying, you know, bus garage, everybody has been amazingly innovative in making this work. But from an educator's standpoint, it's not working the way that I'd hoped it would. And whether that's something that can be fixed or not, that's where we are, I feel like, right now, so.
Thank you. Denise?
Good to see you guys tonight. Um, an important lesson that I learned during the pandemic is that we have the ability to pivot, and we can make adjustments and make things work well. So as you guys started to discuss adjusting the Friday schedule, I intentionally decided that I was going to stay neutral, keep my mind a hundred percent open, and fully support your decision, whatever that is. That being said, I do see pros and cons to both models. And I went through pros and cons, I asked teachers for feedback, pros and cons. So I'm going to read some of those to you. So for the four-hour Friday, pros would be the students are in school. Attendance is mandatory. The learning time increases an hour and a half a week because we'll have lunch onsite. Um, we can teach new curriculum without leaving students behind. About twenty percent more of the curriculum can be on the pacing guides. All of our students would be on the same schedule with our self-contained special ed students. And AM and PM kindergartners can attend each week, both of them. The cons for a four-hour Friday, learning time only increases an hour and a half each week. We lose two hours of prep time each week. The hybrid two-hour Friday, the pros, we have adequate prep time. To, adequate prep time increases the quality of our instruction. Teams have autonomy for enrichment activities because we don't have things scheduled on our pacing guides, and enrichment activities are very engaging for the students. The cons of the hybrid model, attendance is not required. Some students do not do their online work. Some families view school as optional. Two hours doesn't seem like it's worth it for some, some families to send their students. Some students would ride the bus for two hours a day, to be in school for two hours a day. Um, we can't cover new materials because students aren't required to attend, so we don't have full attendance. The quality of the online instruction is not as good as in-person, and students who are struggling may not attend to get the in-person interventions on Friday. So to sum up the four-hour Friday, we can't teach kids who don't show up. And a quote from Abraham Lincoln to sum up the, the hybrid, "Give me six hours to chop down a tree, and I will spend the first four sharpening the axe." Teachers have time to be adequately prepared. I do hope that the board will be open to having two different models for elementary and secondary, if the evidence that you guys see supports two different models being the best thing for our community. I don't think that we necessarily need to have one model for all levels. And I want you to know that at Mazer, we will fully support your decision, and we will do our best to provide a quality education. And regardless of the Friday schedule decision, I'm hoping that the next conversation we can have in our community is how to improve overall attendance. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mostly, I just want to say ditto to Denise. I think she did a great job preparing. And I agree, there are pros and cons to both of these options that we're looking at, all of the options. And at Ashley, we want to support whatever the board decision is, and we will. One concern I have that Denise didn't bring up is I do have a high percentage of students who are from low-income families, where feeding kids can be an issue for them. And I worry about that little lunch that they take home. And are they eating it? Are they sharing it with, you know, family members or whatever? And so having them in the building for breakfast and lunch with us, and having more of them in the building with us for breakfast and lunch is important. And I, you know, I worry about that food security for some of our kids, and having them in the building more helps with that a lot. Three days can be a long time if you don't have any food in the ca, in the cabinets. So that's really all I have to add to whatever Denise said, and thank you.
Um, yes, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to speak to this. Uh, one of the first things that I want you to understand is the attendance that we have currently this year for Friday. Uh, we have about thirty-one percent of our students coming. They're, get, uh, they're the little bottoms in the seat on Fridays. Thirty-one percent are coming. Forty-seven percent are completing the work online. And about twenty-two percent of our students are not doing either. They're, they're receiving non-attendance that
Tell me that figure again, please.
It's right there, written on the top of your Friday attendance, okay? Uh, I wanted to compare Friday learning pre-COVID to Friday learning now. And so if we look at pre-COVID, we went for four hours from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. As I talked to teachers, I said, "How many of you taught an English language, uh, an English lesson?" And they taught a complete lesson on Friday for language arts. They taught a complete lesson for math. They had recess, they had lunch, and then they also had a total of about seventy-five minutes to do extensions or some kind of social studies or science lessons. Currently, we have, um, the students attending doing some online work with Lexia and Ready Math, and then about eighty minutes for extension work. And then if they are home doing their work, they do twenty minutes Lexia, twenty minutes Ready Math. That's current schedule. Our current reality, as I see it, and as the message that my teachers asked be brought, was that we are accepted, we have accepted and are rising to the challenge of the following wildly important goal. Davis students will score above the state average in proficiency in all state-assessed areas. We believe that current, that, that correct tier-one instruction is the most effective teaching practice to increase student learning. The master schedule at Davis is packed. It is extremely tight. The current schedule does not allow, and Denise mentioned this, does not allow for CKLA, Ready Math programs, or for Science and Social Studies state standards to be taught in their entirety. So I just wanted you to see just how tight, take a look at third grade there. We've got CKLA, uh, going across how much they're required to, uh, cover that subject. Reading intervention time, math, uh, instruction time, and then intervention time. When you look at Science and STEM, third grade, my heavens, they have no room. And recesses, thirty minutes in a day for kinder, uh, for, uh, elementary students? That's, in my opinion, unconscionable. We need to have more recess for those little guys to get out there and expand their energy, but that's all they get, is about thirty minutes. Lunchtime, and then we have our specials. But this gives you a total of times of, of what we're doing with our days, Monday through Thursday at Davis Elementary. So, um, our desires, these come from our teachers. Returning to mandatory Friday learning allows for curriculum standards to be more fully taught. Mandatory Friday attendance will also allow for additional reading and math intervention time, as well as development of, in, of intentional extensions and enhanced learnings. And the Davis staff about, uh, believes that additional tier-one instruction time gained by returning to Friday learning of eight-thirty to twelve-thirty in a mandatory schedule will help us get to our goal. I forgot one piece of data. Go to the very top. Denise mentioned that we were hoping, or, and even Aaron mentioned, we were hoping that we were going to be able to get to some intervention time with our special ed kids. I have twenty-one special ed kids, not counting just those who have speech, but twenty-one in K through two. One of those students attends seventy percent of the time or higher. In grades three through five, I have thirty-seven special ed students. Nine of those students attend seventy percent or higher on Friday learning days. Uh, and then one other piece of data I wanted you to see is that, uh, currently, the state of Utah wants us attending ninety-three percent of the time overall, Monday through Friday, ninety-three percent attendance. Davis Elementary is at eighty-nine point three. Do you have any questions?
What was it prior to?
Uh, right at ninety-three? Thank you.
I was waiting for Ms. Christiansen. I guess she's not here. Thank you, guys. I was thirty, for, I wanted to start by saying, I was thirty when I came to education. I did a lot of other things before I started education. And in all of the things I've done, I've never worked with a more professional, hard-working group of people than I work with now, in no industry. And I, and I don't make apologies about that. I was in the military, and that can go both ways. But the fact is, we will do whatever you guys decide. I know our staff will. Having said that, if I were to come up here tonight and tell you what I wanted to happen, it would have been rather simple. Um, I was actually quite surprised when I sat down with my staff, and I asked them, "What do you want me to relay tonight?" And to try and combine what they said, I, I'm gonna say we're torn. The majority of our staff see the benefits, not all, but the majority see the benefits of having a mandatory, at least, four-day-hour attendance on Friday. However, we have asked our teachers to step up like never before. The amount of preparation that's required for CKLA and for M-class, and to teach our math program like it's supposed to be taught, is intense. It, it was nothing like when I was in the classroom. Our teachers are working harder than ever before. It is very difficult to think about losing that extra preparation time. There was a lot of discussion about data and why we have the data we do since COVID, since we went to a two-hour Friday block. Why we haven't seen a drop is, is, is hard to say. I don't think it has to do with the schedule. I think it has to do with how hard our teachers have been working and the quality of curriculum that we've been given. And there are serious concerns universally, if we go back to a four-hour mandatory Friday, with teachers having the time they need to do all that's required. Almost all of our professional learning community, our PLC meetings, are on Fridays, and I have a hard time making all of them. It will be even harder to do if we go back. So we have created a very difficult situation. And, um, I don't know that there's one easy, right answer. Teachers want more face-to-face time with kids. But some things got to give, and I'm not exactly sure what that is. So I come not offering any recommendation. I, I think Dave said the other day, s, this is a decision that when it's made, somebody's going to be unhappy. But I know my teachers and all the teachers in this district, because what I said about my staff, we will continue to work our guts out, and we will continue to try to help kids. I don't particularly know what's best at this point. I would say, because specifically Eagleview has a very unique situation, we're K-eight, so we have a middle school there. One of the things I want to be thought carefully is that when you decide what to do for the middle schools, that doing something different at Eagleview concerns me. It probably should be the same, regardless of the fact that most of my six-eight teachers, most, want the kids back four hours mandatory on Friday. But we know that's probably not the way that the other middle schools are leaning, um, in their preferences. But we don't think our kids, doing something different should probably not happen. It should probably be the same for all six-eight kids. It's something to approach carefully. I don't necessarily know if there will be political fallout from saying that six-eight kids on the west side do this, and six-eight kids on the east side do that. So I think all middle schools should be considered the same. That's one definite recommendation I would make, so.
You would say separate those within the school itself?
Yes, so that, say if the decision was to go to a mandatory four-day on Friday for K-five, then that's what our K-five should do. If six-eight was an optional, you go to school if you need help, kind of situation, then that's what we do on that side as well. The reason being, I just don't want any kind of a feeling like, well, why do we have to go for four hours on Friday when it's an option in Vernal? Um, I don't know if that would happen, but it concerns me. This is the same thing that concerned me when we made the original shift, is that things be the same. It just seems to look better, so. Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you. I had a second-grade teacher that told me, maybe just this middle ground of two hours a day is why we ended up where we were in the first place. I can understand why the decision that was made was to go two hours a day on Friday, because I don't think either option because I don't think either option speaks clearly. I don't think attending four hours a day on Friday, the data shows you, the survey says that it, the opinion is split. So in other words, make a compromise and then everybody has a bad taste in their mouth. Which I, you know, I mean, that's, I don't envy you guys, so. Any other questions? Thanks, Don.
Christiansen from Discovery had a family situation and cannot be here tonight, so we'll just keep moving through alphabetically. I think, Dawn, you're next, right?
All right, thank you. So I've been to a lot of board meetings over the last few years, it's been fun to watch. President Shivers teased Robin and put her on the spot, it's enjoyable. So Robin, what's our, what's our mission?
Our mission?
Yeah.
We provide a positive and engaging learning environment where all students develop essential skills for productive citizenship and lifelong learning. I know we talked a lot about providing a world-class education for all students. That's what public education, that's our brand, that's what we do. We take them all, we don't discriminate, we, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, Robin, that was perfect, for all students. So to make sure that I represented every, everyone from LePointe, the teachers and the school community council, I asked them their opinion face-to-face, I think three times, to make sure that I didn't get it wrong and I wrote it down word-for-word in a lot of places and I just summed it up. And then I practiced with them on Friday in our faculty meeting and I told them what I was gonna say to the board tonight. So we have nine certified teachers, ten with SPED. I spoke with our media specialist, our secretary, I spoke with many of the aides. Every single certified teacher, ten out of ten, and I hope some of them are watching right now. They all said that we need to be in school five days a week. And just like Chris, and Chris talked a little bit about tier one instruction, having core instruction five days a week. And one of the teachers, one of the third-grade teachers, said she likes how it is right now, but she said she knows it's not what's best for kids. And she said that she knows that she could further the students' education if it were mandatory in person on Fridays. Another teacher, to what some of the principals talked about already tonight, another one of the teachers in third grade as well, said that make sure that the school board knows that we are willing to sacrifice that extra prep time that we need, because we want kids in school on Friday. We want it mandatory, five days a week. And part of the reason they feel that way is when they, when the state looks at how schools are performing and they pull different subgroups, there's lots of different subgroups in the data that's pulled. Many of the students from those subgroups aren't attending on Fridays and they're not completing their online work. So I'm here tonight as an advocate for LePointe as a whole, for all the students, for the teachers. And when we talk about the importance of education, when we talk about the importance of teachers, teachers are the variable that determines, I believe, how well students do. That's what the research shows, that's what Hattie Effect size shows. So we need students with teachers as much as they can be, as often as they can be, especially our vulnerable populations, our SPED populations. They need to be with teachers. As a parent, I want my daughter in school five days a week, tier one instruction, with a great teacher, with Kristy Watkins. During the pandemic, my daughter watched a lot of Peppa Pig, she developed a British accent, and I want it gone. I want, I want her to be with the teacher that's gonna do some interventions with her so that she, she talks normal, so. But going back to what Robin started with, we provide a positive and engaging learning environment where all students develop essential skills for productive citizenship and lifelong learning. I'm advocating for all students for five days a week mandatory.
Before you leave.
Yeah, questions, let's do it.
So you said the teachers felt they could opt out of some of their prep?
Well, not opt out, but they'd be willing to sacrifice and do it at another time or at home, they're already doing it at home. But if it went to mandatory in person, five days a week, it'd probably be a twelve forty-five release, so there'd be three hours there. We would work in prep time throughout the week as well when they have specials. So although they would have a little bit less time on Friday, we would work to create a schedule to where they still would have prep time, but yeah, they want to have as much and implementing these programs is a huge task. But the teachers wanted me to tell you tonight that they're willing to make that sacrifice to get the kids to where they need to be. They're terrified that the kids aren't gonna be able to read. That's our job, that, that. I feel, I feel a hundred percent confident and all, all, I don't want to speak for any of the principals, but we're, we're gonna ensure if we have students there five days a week, it's gonna be a world-class education, five days a week. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I also add my voice in thanking you to allow us to speak to you. I can't really add a whole lot more depth to what has already been said. A few months ago, I, I talked with my staff and offered and presented the question of what they would prefer to have, if they would prefer for us to return. Of course, this was right at the beginning of your work to investigate and to explore this, change or not change. And they were split, they were split on whether they wanted to have the kids back the four hours or to continue with the prep time that they had. And the reason behind that is because of the trade-off. Because of, of course, the trade-off of having to give up their prep time that they felt like was being used very, very wisely. And coming into this, I did not have any pre-COVID experience with YWNTA. And so I have to say that this was just the way it was. However, having experienced it now for a year and a half, my concern as the administrator was more about the attendance. The attendance at a Title I school. We have our most high-risk kids at home, not attending on Fridays. And I don't have the exact numbers, I pulled them probably in November because I was just exploring it as well. And our attendance at that point in time was forty-two percent on Fridays. We also had a lot of good activities, really engaging activities at that time, too. I don't know where it's at at this point in time and I apologize for that, I did not get time to pull that data. However, I don't, I don't see that it's probably improved or increased, I should say.
Question, is that total or just in person?
Fridays in person, yeah.
Just in person?
Turn your mic on, Robin.
Just that's all the students?
That is all the students.
So they're not segregated out as far as coming back?
I did not, I did not disaggregate it out. However, I will say that again, in our efforts to provide interventions for the kids on that Friday, the ones that are needing it the most are not there to be able to provide those interventions, and that is concerning. Again, for a Title I school, our most at-risk kids are at home on Friday. I don't have, again, the specifics of percentage like Chris did, I applaud her for that. But I do know that my teachers are concerned about the lack of engagement online on Fridays with our kiddos, so. But as I asked my staff this last Friday, again, because I wanted to get fresh data from them, fresh input, again, I had them concerned in wanting the kids back at school, however, concerned about the trade-off. They, they want the kids there, we all want the kids there. We just want to, they wanted to make sure, I guess I should say, they wanted to make sure that we did still have quality prep time, that they were able to have that so that they could be prepared. Because they do feel like with PLCs and being able to collaborate together and using the PLCs in that very most effective way of coming together and planning and comparing data, that they wanted that to continue as well and to be able to be prepared, so. That's all I have.
Quick question?
Uh huh, you bet.
So this puts you on the spot, but any principal can, can ask or answer. Simply, all of you have said that your at-risk students are not attending, their seats, their seats are empty. I'm questioning the other side of that. Are we seeing any or a higher average of elementary students excelling? And are you tracking that?
Excelling in what manner?
In any way above testing scores, more so than they would have before.
And again, I have not equated that to students who are attending on Friday and their acceleration. I have not looked at that data, there might be some others that have, but I have not made that comparison of data. We, of course, just finished our mid-year data dives on reading and we are holding pretty strong with our kids that were blue and green. However, I, on Fridays, that's not instruction that's happening. On Fridays, it's that, it's that extension piece that's happening.
I guess where I was getting at, go ahead, Ann.
I, I didn't mention this because I wasn't just talking for myself, but Eagleview this year was put on targeted school improvement for four different subgroups. Native American, special ed, economically disadvantaged, and Spanish students. These students attended a lower attendance, especially on Fridays. And that, what that means to be on targeted school improvement is that for the past two years, those subgroups have scored in the lowest percentage of state. It's been a serious concern for me. I do see some reading data this year that seems to be reversing that trend because we've implemented M-class interventions. But my first thought was, we're coming out of COVID, and I don't have kids on Friday. That's my thought. I can't back up necessarily if those are the reasons. But for those targeted subgroups, for us, something is wrong. And this, my school is not the only school in this district that has trouble with certain subjects. I'm not saying Fridays are the magic key to reverse that. I think some of the curricular decisions we're making are more important. However, it scares me.
So dig a little deeper, it scares you in the fact that we will continue to lose? Our, our testing scores seem to be pretty flat, is it, I guess what I'm asking, is it because some kids are testing higher and some are lower, is that why we're staying in the average? I don't know.
I'm still trying to understand the data too, Todd.
You are absolutely.
I'm still trying to understand the data too. We had a Title I audit recently at Eagleview and they noted with excitement the percentage of increase that we have had. To tell you the truth, one of the weaknesses that I'll admit is that I look at the whole school's data and I don't pull out my subgroup data, which is something that you can bet will change going forward. But it would seem to me to say that there are groups that are improving because our overall performance improved. This is last year, and this is just RISE that I'm talking about. So that TSI only applies to RISE, so it's grades three through eight for us. So an assumption could be made that there is a group that is performing better. Now I will say, we've spent a lot of time targeting rigorous tier one instruction, which hits grade-level kids. That's gonna, those kids that are doing well and that are close to or are proficient are gonna continue to do well with rigorous tier one instruction. The group that suffers can be your groups that don't particularly attend or perform well. And those are some of those subgroups that I mentioned. However, this year, we implemented M-class. So across the board, kindergarten through fifth grade and with Read 180 and six-eight, we have for the first time systematic interventions occurring for kids that are below proficient. We've seen some data this year that is very promising. We've moved more Reds this year than we have in the past two years. The way you get on TSI is the two previous years. The way you get off is to have two years within the next three where your kids are not testing in that lowest group. And that's just on RISE. And I will tell you, the data that I'm seeing that shows improvement is not RISE data because we administer interims, but the number of interims we're able to administer don't give us enough granular data to say we're on track to perform well for RISE at the end of the year. There's some changes we're thinking about making with that as well, to be able to test with what are called RISE benchmarks as opposed to just the interim test. So there's some things we're looking at. But it, when I told you initially, if I were to come up here and say, I want more, I want kids at my school more often with my teachers and I've got groups that I'm really concerned about. But I speak for my whole school, so. That specifically, on that data about those subgroups and who's advancing, I just wanted to bring up.
Yeah, you've, you've made me question quality versus quantity as well, so, thank you.
No, you're good, I just wanted to add one more thing, just as far as what our data at Naples indicated, and I think it probably is pretty consistent across all of the, at least Title I schools, is that our tier one instruction, the, the quality maybe or quantity equating it to having eighty percent of our kids on grade level is not there. We need more time to implement that tier one instruction, in my opinion, so, thank you.
Can I, can I ask Principal Jones or, and just, so the M-class and the Read 180, when are you, when are you doing those interventions? Like when specifically in the, in the day?
I was gonna ask as well, is it a Friday-type thing or?
So it's not.
It's throughout Monday through Thursday?
It, it, it is, it is. We, we have, most of the K-5s have about an hour of what they call, it's reading intervention time and those M-classes, that, that M-class instruction occurs then.
Okay, I just wanted, and then I, can I ask just a question for any of the elementary?
Let's not ask my permission to ask questions tonight, let just, let just ask them.
So I could, just somebody from elementary, just, I wanted, can you explain how you do attendance? Like how, what's your mechanism for validating that the children are attended? Are we done? Are we, are we done?
We've done all the elementary schools, correct?
I just want to know how you're taking attendance. Because you're all probably doing it the same. How are they getting credit for being in school? That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
It took us a minute to figure that out.
I want to know that from middle school and I want to know that from high school, too.
So if students, if you were to look at attendance and how it's recorded on Aspire, if they have a B, teachers call that butts in seats. They are present that day. If they have a dot, that means they did the online work.
Which is, you see.
For elementary, it's twenty minutes of Lexi.
Forty minutes, maybe, max, okay.
And if they are, and the way that they figure that out is the teachers have to wait till Monday. Monday morning, they have to go on to Lexi FC, who did their time, go on to Ready Math to see who did theirs. And then if they have an X, that means that they weren't in attendance on Friday and they did not go on to do their online work.
Okay, and then one more question, this is a different subject, just Principal Martin Ove talked about this, what are we talking time-wise for teacher prep?
Okay.
Like, give me specifics, give us.
So eight-thirty to ten-thirty, students are there. You're talking Friday and prep time, so.
Prior and like, they're saying they're willing, I think it was Principal, he said they're willing to sacrifice their, so I'm, what are we talking?
So we're talking about from ten-thirty, well, ten-forty-five, when you get them on the bus or off, you know. Let's say that it's actually ten-thirty to four o'clock or eleven to four is going to be five hours, contract time, right? We've been asked to do, that their teachers spend a certain amount of time, and I think it might vary. In my school, I ask them to do at least one hour collectively with their PLC. And the rest of the time, it's And the rest of the time, it's teach, independent teacher, but I can tell you that my teachers are together probably preparing things and all that collabora- collaboration, probably at least three of those five hours.
So how much time do they individually get?
They, they could get up to like four, would you sa- would you say, four?
Right now?
Mm-hmm.
So then if we go to, back to the four-hour pre-COVID, what would they get?
They would get four hours, so they have one hour PLC, three hours to, to work together.
So if they were more, okay.
And just, just to run.
Okay, it broke it down easier for me. One of the principals said a minute ago is that we're talking about an hour and a half. Do you, do you elementary teachers or principals all agree? We're talking about, you know, we can break things out a million different ways, and each one of you principals do things a little bit different, but we're talking about adding an hour and a half of instructional time and losing an hour and a half of teacher prep time.
Could be. And the reason, hour and a half, I think Denise was the one who kinda spoke to that, and, and we've gotta give them thirty minutes to eat lunch on site. Okay?
For me, if that figure's right, that's easier in my mind to work through than the.
Sure.
That's what we're talking about, is an hour and a half of instruction time or an hour and a half of prep time, depending on which schedule you're talking about.
Do they have any added recesses with the four-hour schedule?
Yes, they, at our school, we had a fifteen-minute in the middle of the time.
So just fifteen minutes?
So it's forty-five minutes basically for lunch, thirty minutes for the fifteen, these different schools?
Yeah, forty-five minutes.
So you're saying we're talking an hour and fifteen minutes total?
Hour and fifteen minutes for?
Additional instruction.
No, it'd still be an hour and a half. It still would be an hour and a half. We have to have lunch and recess.
So they still?
Lunch and recess, forty-five minutes. We're adding two hours.
So we didn't, I, we didn't do a la- a recess after, after the lunch, only the mid-morning recess. Not a, so they do a mid-
And it was already there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you already have a mid-morning in that two hour, you have a recess?
Yes. No, no, right now, we do not have a recess.
You were only talking an hour and fifteen minutes. Okay.
Wait, and when's that faculty meeting? I just wanna know the schedule. What's the schedule?
What's the schedule?
Schedule on Friday.
Now or?
Right now?
Right now.
Right now, they come at eight-thirty, and at my school, they do their forty minutes of intervention, and then they don't have a recess and go into extensions and, and enhancements.
She put that all down for us on this one.
I'm looking at it. So and then they, and they don't grade their online, they put their online on during their prep time, and they do the online.
And they have to do it Monday morning.
Correction on Monday morning. So they're still using a lot of their time in this.
Yes. It's not easy to come back Monday morning and go through all of them to find.
Elementary has to midnight also, right?
On Sunday night.
On Sunday night.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, let's jump into, Sharon, you went to middle school? You guys ready to shift gears to middle school? Alright.
So it's fun, because I always feel like we're part elementary and part secondary in the middle school. And yes, we grade the same way and take attendance the same way. I shouldn't say grade the same way. We take attendance the same way in our middle schools. They get the B for butts in the building, bodies in the building. And then they have the, they have a dot if they are present. That means they have logged on before midnight on Sunday, and they will be counted as present. If they do not log in, then they're counted as absent.
Are they present in every class?
No, just the class that they log in. Because we have seven periods. So they might log in to their math class, so they get counted as present, but maybe they don't get counted in their ELA class because they didn't log in and do the work there.
But to clarify, for the day, they are present.
The day they're present.
When you look at, when you look at the attendance rules, right, it's, it's a ten-day drop. So if, if they log in on a Friday, even for one class, then that day doesn't, it counts toward our funding.
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm getting at.
So the way the middle school does their Friday work this year, we changed this year because teachers wanted to see their kids more. So we kinda do, you might even call it a block schedule on Friday. One Friday, we do periods one, two, and three. And then the next Friday, they do the last three periods of the day. So teachers are actually seeing their kids, getting to, get, to give instruction more on that than they would have if, the way we did it last year. So just so to clarify that, so. Okay, so to start with, I did another little survey with my faculty today and just said, hey, what do you want, what are you looking at? What are you seeing? And the, the results I got back were seventy-four point one percent of those surveyed today wanted to have a mandatory four-hour Friday. I had one, a couple of comments that I wanted to talk to you about. One, I gave them an opportunity to say, to give some comments. One said, I originally voted for the virtual, but then after being here and seeing what's not happening, I want them here in class because most of our kids are not doing the work on Friday. So they wanted them in class. So they changed their mind, and they just said that the kids that we want to see are not coming on Fridays. Those are those kids, are those intervention kiddos that we really want to see. We as well, as Eagle View, are a TSI school, a targeted school with two of our sub, subgroups, our Native American kiddos and our Special Ed kiddos. And we're not seeing those kids on Friday when we need to see them as well, so. And they're not doing their, their Friday work. At the beginning of the year, we had over three hundred kids coming on Fridays, and we were really excited about that. We were at about thirty-four, thirty-five percent of our kids coming. And now we are two hundred or less, so we are under thirty percent now that are coming on Fridays in the building because they do not have to be there. One of the things that we talked about over and over again is our Tier One instruction, that face-to-face, that Tier One instruction, and it's one of the, has one of the biggest impact on student learning. And we also know that intervention, we've heard this over and over and over again, intervention cannot be something that's optional. You cannot have kids opt in or out of intervention. It has to be part of your school day. Right now, we have intervention built in to our school day during our advisory time two days a week. But by the time the kids get there, they have about twenty to twenty-five minutes of intervention, and teachers can't see all of them. So they, our teachers right now are requesting anywhere from five to ten kids a day, and not all of those kids are there to come in for interventions during the school day. They are doing that now, bringing in those five or ten kids while they still have other kids doing enrichments. That's another whole thing that we'll talk about, or we can talk about at a later time.
So, but how do they choose who comes in for intervention?
So we have, we're the Hawks, and we have what's called our Nest Request, and we are requesting our kids into the Nest to come in. It's on a spreadsheet. And on Friday through, and Monday, they can request kids to come to their class. And then when the kids go to their advisory, they put it up on the screen and they say, Joey, Suzie, and Johnny, you guys have been requested. These are the teachers, you're going, go now.
Based on?
Based on if they need to see them for interventions.
And that would be based on their grades?
Not necessarily their grades.
Not necessarily their grades.
If they are missing a skill or a standard, so.
So additional needed help is what that intervention is strictly for?
Correct. So they may come in, some, some teachers say, here's the one standard we're working on, I'm gonna request every kid who didn't get that standard. And then those five kids or seven kids might come in, and the teacher will work with them on that standard. It's not about retaking a test, it's about making sure they understand that standard or skill.
So is there any time for that student who wants to excel other than Friday?
If they're not requested, they're not requested every, every, it's on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and they're not requested every single day.
So what about those that wanna excel? Do they have an option to be requested?
So if they want.
Our intervention?
So if they want, if they're not requested, then we have a program built in so they, when they stay in their advisory, they're doing an enrichment activity. And they can actually choose from different options. Hey, I wanna do better in ELA, or I wanna do better in math, or I wanna do better in CTE, and they have four different options.
But that's not overseen by anybody?
It's overseen by the advisory teacher.
By the advisory teacher.
But it's online, so the teacher's not presenting that enrichment.
That's what I thought. Self.
It is.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Erin when she talks about it being, in theory, this would have been a great idea. I talked to Tanya about this, and, you know, for me and my, my children, and I hate, I feel like I'm bragging, and I don't want that to be, but my, my kids were pretty good students because they had me for a mom and who was on them all the time. In reality, that would have been great for them because I probably would have sent them to school anyhow. But they knew that they had to keep up on their grades, and so, but for our kids who are struggling, it's really tough for them. They may not have the support at home, or, like I've talked to Tanya before, when the weather was nice, we had several kids who would come in, ride the bus into school, and then just walk downtown. Their parents thought they were there, but they weren't there because we're so close to downtown. Like Dawn, I also talked with my community council, and they prefer the four-hours mandatory, so. And that's what most of my teachers wanted. I think I got all my notes in here. I think that's it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Any questions?
Erin, you're up.
First of all, thank you for taking the time to look really closely, really deeply into this to do what's best for our students. I'll jump right to my recommendation, that is a four-hour mandatory attendance on Fridays. My biggest concern, a lot that has been shared is, are also my concerns. My biggest one is the students who struggle in reading because that, that sets them up for failure or success in every other subject. We have some really robust programs for reading to help those students, and more time with those teachers and those programs that we put in place will, will make a big impact on their ability to read. We're also under a TSI designation for some subgroups, and, and as is mentioned, was mentioned before, we don't see many of those students on Fridays with their current schedule. Most of my teachers that I talked to said they would gladly give up prep time to have more instructional time with their students. They didn't, they didn't sign up for the prep time, they signed up to make a difference for their, for their kids. Right now, we're about, sorry, thirty percent attendance in person and about sixty percent attendance online. So there's still a, a big drop. A lot of students are not completing Friday work if they stay home.
So you just said sixty percent online and thirty percent, so you got a total of ninety percent?
No, if they come into the building, they still do, they still do online work.
Oh, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so it does, it doesn't add, it, it's.
It's part of that sixty percent.
One is inside the other, yeah.
So children that are not getting any, what is that percentage?
It's about thirty to forty percent.
Of no instruction?
Any other questions?
So, one question, I, I know your new back data in talking to some of the teachers previous to COVID, we have an accelerated pace of kids taking Fridays off, excused Fridays. Do you recall any of that? Or do you ever, did you track numbers? Did they track numbers on that? Are you aware of?
Let's see.
It seems like we had it somewhere, but I can't find it, so.
I, I don't recall. What was my, I'm trying to remember.
There was, there was unexcused, and then there was excused, and I can't find that excused number anywhere, so. No. Thank you.
I don't.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
All right, so you have a lot of data, right? You have the survey data, you have the teacher data. I have eighty teachers, I'm gonna go resurvey eighty teachers. But I have talked to a lot of our teachers, and it is a mixed bag. And so I, I can't stand up here definitively and recommend something because the data's inconclusive. And also, I, I would say that the high school data looked pretty good this last year. We had double-digit growth, we had outstanding growth. You know, our students were, or our teachers worked really hard last year to make that happen. So if, if it were conclusive, this would be easy, but the data doesn't bear that out. So I just wanna share some, some things with you that I have seen in addition to all of the data that you have. So mandatory attendance on Friday. I just, I have to say that, and, and I'm echoing what the other principals have said, teachers are the single most significant factor in student learning. You can take any other factor or variable and compare it to the teacher, and the teacher has the most impact on student learning. So when our students are not interacting with our teachers, you would assume that there would be a loss in learning or that they would miss an opportunity. So, so students having an opportunity with teachers is, is important. And one of the concerns I have is that we know that online learning is not as effective. Technology is created to enhance, not supplant, teaching and learning. And I think a little bit of what we've done is we've started to rely on Canvas and some of these platforms to replace the most important and significant factor, and that is our teachers. So students aren't completing their Friday work, so it's, it's really, when you have like eighteen hundred students and they each have five classes, what we do is a zero, a zero attendance report. And so what that does is it goes through each student, and it figures out like who didn't log in, okay? So we typically will have between, on average, probably about seventeen hundred to eighteen hundred kids who are not, they may log into math, but they may not log into science. And so if you average that out, it's about three hundred and fifty kids every Friday doing nothing. And one of the things I do wanna stress is that UNTA doesn't have this unique problem. There's a nineteen percent chronic absenteeism rate in our state since COVID. And, and if we're gonna talk about mandatory attendance, good luck because compulsory education is pretty much out the window. You can't mandate anyone. And with the new laws that came into effect last year with the state saying, you know, parents can excuse their students for any number of, of instances under a lot of different headings like mental health, we, we have no teeth in attendance. And so when we compare, when we used to have a few more teeth there, it's really, you're comparing apples and oranges. We have, we, we have to incentivize, because we have no punitive avenue for, for compulsory edu-, or compulsory attendance. I, I, at, at the high school, you know, we're, we're pushing, we've got, we've got hard-working, incredibly hard-working teachers competing and, and pushing our kids to get a full year's worth of learning in two trimesters, and then we take away Friday. And so that's putting a burden, however, the data does not show that that was a significant, it has significant impact. So it's a really, the data's weird. It, it's all, it's all a little confusing. There are lots of reasons why we want kids in school on Friday. The other principals have talked about it, you have the data, the high school's very mixed. And I'll tell you, the people who wanna be there on Friday, extremely passionate about being there on Friday. And I think I can probably, I think we see that across the schools where, you know, there, there's a lot of passion there. And conversely, there's a lot of passion on the other side. And I just wanna talk about keeping the current schedule. And I'm not, I'm telling you, I, I wish I could come up here and passionately advocate for one. That would be really great. But it's, it's difficult with, with the data not, not being conclusive. I, I love Fridays as a principal. I love, love, love them because we meet at seven fifteen every single Friday, and we have faculty meeting, and we connect, and we communicate, and, and we, it, it's, it's a tremendous positive for our culture, and it, it helps move our school forward. After that, we have every- And it, it helps move our school forward. After that, we have every single Friday professional development, where administration brings the teachers in and we teach them on our instructional framework. And every teacher is getting professional development, building their capacity every single Friday. Students come for a couple hours, and then after that, we have data analysis meetings, and we take those very seriously. And teachers are required to have data, and they do. They, they look at the data, they determine what students are doing well, how do we extend that learning? They look at students who need support, um, and, and those are very targeted, uh, very well-run, very intentional meetings that our teachers are having. And, and then they have the opportunity to prepare. So I, I think that Fridays, you could argue that Fridays sharpen the saw of teachers. And when teachers are happy and when teachers are well-prepared, our kids are, are the beneficiaries of that. So that's a little tricky. I did, I did also have one, uh, some parents indicate that they really like the mental health aspect of their students not having to go full Fri, five days, that having that four instead was just kind of a relief. But when, there are so many things at the high school too that are in play. We're talking about athletics and activities and travel. And Fridays give our, our, our kids who are out otherwise during the week an opportunity to come in, connect with their teachers, make up work, um, get some extra help. So I, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I really wish I could say, I, I, I do know that, and, and everyone's, I'm going to echo what everyone has said. We will do our very best with the schedule that we have. But I do, I, I do worry about our teachers because they are, they are our most powerful commodity in this district. They are where the magic happens. They're it. And if they're compromised, if they're tired, if they don't have enough time to really prepare and get their feet under them, they're going through the motions. And so I just, I, I think we need to certainly consider, this is all about our kids and what's best for our students. But what is best for our teachers is best for our students too. So, questions?
Christie, prior to, Principal Nurdin, prior to COVID, we had five-day schedule with a late start Monday with RTI built in on the Mondays, called the golden, so it's, you know, a full Friday. So if it were to go to, if we were consistent and simplified, and we did across the board, an early-out Friday, I'm just asking, I know this is probably not scientific, but I'm just, I know, I know educators and I know how innovative and creative and how they get stuff done, and could they be more efficient and still sharpen the saw with an early-out Friday?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
You're just going to say yes no matter what?
Well, we, we, we can, they, they won't have nearly as much time. And ti, this is the thing, time matters.
It does.
Like we pretend, like we kind of ignore it. We pretend, yep, sorry you don't have that much time, but keep going. Time matters. And you know that old saying that teachers are building the airplane while they're flying it? It's hard. And, and, and we do hard things, but, but why wouldn't we optimize our teachers' ability and, and presence in the classroom? We keep talking about tier-one instruction. That takes prep time.
It does, but they can do a lot with little.
They can, they absolutely can. They absolutely can. And, and we, we would restructure Fridays so that we could still sharpen those saws, but then teachers could, could meet the needs of their kids. And the, the amazing thing about our teachers is they do it. I just worry about them. I worry about my teachers often. And just want to, I, I just want us to think about, about, about that when we're making these decisions. I know you will, but. Other questions?
So I know I have a couple of grandchildren that attend Fridays when they need something.
Yep.
I think they opt out when they don't. If we no longer have Fridays, what, what time is available for that additional help if needed?
So if, if we go back to Fridays, I haven't talked to my teachers really about this, but I think that we can find some, we can optimize, we can do some intervention time. We can structure it so that the kids who need help on Fridays can go get it, the kids who need extension can go get it, the kids who want enrichment can go get it if we're ma, mandatory on Fridays. Um, we can, we can find that time for sure.
My understanding, you're seeing quite a bit of that.
Yes, yes. It, Fri, Fridays are fabulous for that reason, you know? Kids can come in, they can get the help, they can get the one-on-one. Class sizes are small, teachers can respond to their needs. And they don't have to stay. The nice thing about most high school kids is they can come and go. One of the challenges we do have though is, um, kids that just come on the bus, and I understand why they come. Last year, we were super structured. So last year, you came, there were three class periods. We processed every student, like we, we checked what classes they were failing, they had to fill out a schedule, they had to have the teacher sign that, and the kids, the kids didn't work within that framework. So the kids want it to be fluid so that they can come and go and get the help that they need. But we do have a few behavior issues on Fridays because we've got kids coming on the bus that don't want to be there.
So parents are still forcing some kids.
Yeah.
Based on that.
Right. And you can understand why, and, and that goes back to another one of the challenges we have is, you know, some of these parents, um, need to have a place for their kids to go on Friday.
That's my concern. So in your opinion, good, better, and best, what is the best option?
Seriously, Todd?
Or do we actually have it on the table?
That's a load of questions.
You don't have to decide. It's rough enough that we have to decide.
No, I'm just curious.
Listen, listen, I, I have to tell you something.
When I say good, better, and best, are, are we looking, are we not looking at an option that would work best for, for the high school?
So I, I was at.
Christie, while, Christie, while you're thinking, um, Principal Nurdin, while you're thinking about that for a minute, board members, I want you to remember something. When we asked these principals to do this, we sent them, they're coming to report, each one of us, I think, if we was to stand up to the mic and say, what do you think's best? We'd have our own opinion. But these principals can't give us that opinion, what they think is best, because th, they're here representing their whole staff. And so we've got, Principal Nurdin can't look at us and say, I want you to do this, this is best for high school students. Because she's got a whole, oh, oh, and every principal here is in the same situation. They're here representing their staff and what their staff told them. And so. I'm not, I'm not telling you, Todd, not to ask the question. I'm just saying that. We've got, we understand that we have you principals kind of in the same situation that we are. No matter if you make, made a definite recommendation, half of your employees are going to be upset at you tomorrow. The, the data is that divided.
Christie, Christie, you're welcome to contact Todd later or email him. Um, I think that would be fair.
Okay.
And so, and, and the reason why I asked for the best is I, I really didn't, I mean, there was a reason why we went to the schedule we did. And simply the other wasn't functioning any, either. And so we see that it's not a difference in test results, and so is there a best? Is there an option out there that we have not dug into? Is there an option out there that, for our principals, that would be better than what we're looking at? What, what enhances the learning of these students? Time with teachers, you've said it numerous times, but what really enhances that time and, and what can we do? A, a lot of us are trying to say, we have the high-risk students, and that's who we need in the seat. Well, do we change everything for fifteen to thirty percent of the students? What about those that are trying to excel and exceed? And what are we doing for them? That's, that's where I'm asking any principal here, because I think you've got to look at both ends of that.
The, the problem is it's, it's so multifaceted that, that when we say best, what, what do we mean? How do we define that?
Best for.
Christie, you know the research. Tell them what the research says about schedules.
Uh, Sue?
You want me to tell them?
Yeah.
The research on school schedules, and we'd had this, the same debate and conversation when we were talking about the semester-trimester debate. It doesn't matter. Like, there, there are, there is not one scientific study that says that one schedule works better than another. And so really, what it comes down to is, best is what these professionals and our teachers make of whatever the board decides to do. Best is, is how we implement it and, and the care that we give, the, the effectiveness of the instructional strategies happening in the classroom, right? Or the effectiveness of, of the approach teachers take in their online learning for kids that are participating virtually. That's what the research says. It's, it's, it's about the effectiveness of instruction and the quality of the teacher in the classroom, far more than it is about the schedule.
I have to tell you, I was, uh, just got back today from a conference in San Antonio, and I met a, a former teacher from UNTA there. And she is a, um, vice principal in this small mining town in Nevada. And, um, she said that they have moved to a four-day week, uh, for teacher retention. It's longer, the, the class, you know, the, the class day's longer, but she said, I said, tell me about your data. And she said it's exactly the same as before.
Yeah, we've seen that in Colorado as well.
Right, so, so we, we, we see it, but, but then there are these anc, and they're not ancillary, but there, there are these unintended consequences and outcomes of, you know, like, let's make sure that our teachers are able to have the prep time that they need. I really believe not, I really believe bottom line, that that impacts student learning. And so we got to take care of our teachers so they can take care of our kids.
So I did note that you, you mentioned an old Covey saying of sharpening the saw, and that's the, the reality of it. What are we doing to allow these teachers to sharpen the saw? It doesn't matter what profession you're in, you're much more efficient if you have that time for preparation. And what, what does this schedule give us? What are the varying schedules? Any, and Principal, what do these varying schedules give us in preparation time for the teacher?
So just, I, I'm just going to speak for the high school and then you get, but I'm very proud of, of what we're doing at the high school. I feel like we're building the capacity of each one of our teachers. They have, they have a lot of prep time. If they don't sell their prep, the, the teachers at the high school, they, they're, they're being taken care of in that way. And I think that you're seeing that on the back end with, with student achievement and, and our scores. So I, that's important. Um, so I, if you want to talk to the elementaries about that, because I know that they're in a different situation.
But I'll have that same time to, to prep. You've said it wouldn't go away, so I'm just curious.
So there is a, there is a, I don't want to call it a disparity, but there's a difference between the amount of prep time that our, our high school and middle school teachers have versus elementary, okay? There, there's a, there's quite a bit of difference. So, so moving away from the Friday schedule at the elementary level, I, I believe it will impact their prep time more so in that they don't have as much time throughout the week each day to prep. And, and so.
Say, say that again.
Elementary teachers on a daily basis don't have as much time built in their day to prep as high school teachers have.
All right, so the, going away from a Friday schedule would impact them more so than a?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm saying as far as prep time, it would.
As far as prep time.
Yes, I, I think that they would have to get creative in how they're going to. I mean, they have specials, right? But a lot of times, they're, they're assigned extra duties, so prep time's hard to come by for elementary teachers.
And most of them are preparing multiple subjects.
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, some high school teachers do too.
So sorry, we've got you on the podium. But the reality, I'm, I'm looking back at, at teachers that are trying to provide an online learning plus an in-class learning. How is that affecting these teachers?
It's hard because they're double prepping.
They're double prepping, so, so we take that prepping away, does that give them some of that time? Back? Is that, I guess that's what I'm asking.
So, and, and there are advantages for our students to have things available on Canvas. But, but full-blown courses, um, like we've had in the past with COVID, I think that we could, we could streamline, um, the expectations probably with Canvas a little bit more. I'd love to see that happen anyway because I think we're getting Canvas-heavy in the district, at least at the secondary level. I don't know what you guys are seeing at the.
So in, in our reality, when you say that, in, in preparation for those that go on, I know we don't have high score or a high percentage that go onto a college, but colleges are starting to go much more, uh, online. How are we going to prep? If we're not using Canvas or other options, how are we going to prep those students?
I, I think we can still use it, but we, but, but we have to remember our purpose. And, you know, when, when we say, what is the purpose of technology in the classroom, it is to enhance learning. It's not to replace. It's not to replace the teacher. We, like best practices, we want teachers interacting with kids. You know the difference between a presenter and a teacher is when that person checks for understanding and then follows up with feedback because they're taking responsibility for student learning on them. They're not just presenting and, good luck, I hope you get it. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. We need teachers interacting with kids, checking for understanding, closing the gap between what kids know and what's expected of them. But they need teachers for that. And I, not that we're not going to use Canvas, we're going to use Canvas, but I think we have to be careful because there is an important balance there. And I, I think we have to swing back just a little bit to make sure our teachers are interacting with our kids.
So in a perfect world, we assume that Friday's schedule was to close that gap. And you're saying it's not working. Most of you said it's not working because we're not getting butts in the seat.
Yeah, and so teachers are like, well, how, how much do I make this count? Because I know there's a percentage of kids that are never going to do Friday work.
That's, that's what I'm saying. And, and it doesn't matter if there are butts in the seat, there's a percentage of them that's not going to do it, so.
And if there are butts in the seat, sometimes there's a percent that also don't do it.
I agree.
Right, so.
All right, I'm just, sorry I keep.
It's fine.
Directing at you. I, I have a lot of questions.
This is fun. Let's keep talking.
Can I ask one other question that you just, I thought about what you were asking her question? So on Fridays though, across the board, they're really not, are, are they teaching new material or is it just?
So we have a Friday framework, and that Friday framework has been shared with teachers. And I, I have to tell you, since we implemented the Friday framework, it, it, we talk about how long the lesson should be, the nature of the lessons, how to engage students in the lesson, and typically there are review of what was done during the week. We, and, we, we encourage teachers to talk about the Friday schedule all week so that the kids are motivated, they're aware. And we have seen an uptick in, um, Friday completion this year over last year. So our kids are doing it more than they were before.
But mostly review.
Or, or.
Because you're not.
Or, or like practice or, or an extended opportunity.
So we were under the understanding that Fridays prior to were a fun day anyway, so.
I disagree with that, Steve.
No.
I don't.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Dave, so Mrs. McKay from AVAC couldn't be here, but she did provide us a written summary of, of her thoughts. So do you want to just pass those around? I don't think we need to read through them. Ms. Tolan, you've, you've got a record there. But if you'll, if you will, please take a look at the bullets that she provided. We want to make sure that, that her thoughts are represented.
Question, maybe it goes back to, to Principal Nurdin. So we talk high risk. Do, do the AVAC in the, in the high school take on some of those high-risk students?
Um, AVAC is an alternative high school, so, so we have quite a few at-risk kids that attend AVAC.
So I, I mean, if you look at those children on up through, those that were at high risk through elementary and.
Yes, a, a fair percentage, a fair percentage of those kids.
Are that same group?
Not, not all of them, right? There's, there's, uh, there's a lot of subgroup kids at the high school that, um, that the environment at the high school works well for them. Or at least that's where they choose to participate in their education program. Some kids, for various reasons, end up choosing the alternative route. And then we have the kids that do both. We have kids that, that are part-time attenders at the high school and they take a class here and there at AVAC.
I remember Andy's, he gave, gave us a number of like seventy-some percent of high school students attend at, at least a class at AVAC.
Yeah, if you remember any of our graduation ceremonies, there's quite a few kids that have the little ropes from AVAC.
I, I just, you know, when do you take care of them? When are we taking care of them? So, great, thank you.
Yep. And AVAC structure's a little bit different, and I think you'll get an idea when you read through Andy's notes. So it doesn't really impact them in the same way it does, you know, whatever the schedule is. It doesn't impact AVAC in the same way, okay? All right, um, so President, I would recommend we take a little break at this point and then come back, and we'll jump into our data analysis protocol. Oh, we didn't hear from our coordinators yet. Thank you. Let's, let's start with Sheri with foods. Come on up, Sheri. We felt like it would be important to hear from our coordinators so that you, you can get perspective from them. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mindy. Sheri, come on up.
We're not going to drill you quite like we did the teachers, I'm sure.
They might, Sheri. You're not done yet, so we'll see.
But thank you for inviting me. So, um, you know, with, with school, with school meals, you know, we can do whatever you all feel is best. We do recommend four-school meals. We do feel like, um, going back to the pre-COVID schedule is better for kids. For one reason, breakfast and lunch on the current schedule are served really close together. They come to school, they eat breakfast, they're in class for hour and a half to two hours, they, they get their lunch. They do take it home, you know, some kids eat it right away, some might think, "Oh, it's too close together, I'm just, I'm gonna save it." That is a concern of mine, because there are some foods that aren't good to be saved for very long. You know, they have a ham sandwich or whatever, and those are kind of, or milk, you know, of course, they're gonna open the milk and it's spoiled, they probably know they're not gonna drink it. But there's some things that actually also should not be saved for long periods of times that kids might not realize. For instance, if you go to the grocery store and you just look at your fresh vegetables, like a carrot that is unpeeled is out in non-refrigerated area. But if you look at the little baby carrots that have been peeled in their bag, they're in a refrigerated area. And that's because when you peel a vegetable, or you peel a fruit, or you slice it, you're now introducing bacteria. So those kinds of items need to be refrigerated, just like you would your meat, or your cheese, or those kinds of things we normally think about. So I do worry that some kids might take those home and save them till Saturday, because some kids don't have a lot of food on Saturday. So I feel like they're better off, you know, to come to school, have breakfast, three or four hours later have lunch, instead of an hour and a half to two hours later be served lunch. Also, just at the sack lunch, you know, we're kind of more limited. If we can serve them a good hot lunch at school, we have a lot more variety for those kids. And the quality is gonna be a lot better, the, the closer to the preparation time that you can serve a meal, the quality's just gonna be better than, you know, if a sandwich sits in a bag for two hours compared to it's been prepared fashion, meat put on the tray shortly before. Also, Fridays are pretty difficult for us to prepare meals. A lot of people don't think about it, but sack meals actually take a lot more time for us to prepare. You're having to put it in a lot more packaging. And with the amount of time we have between breakfast and lunch, there isn't time to prepare all the lunches that we need to. So we kinda start on Thursday, getting the things ready that we can, and then start early Friday morning to do a lot more. And so again, those items just aren't as fresh, because we're having to prepare ahead of time. And then, just some other things. You know, school lunch programs operates a little bit different than other programs. We're kind of operating more like a business, we're kind of self-sufficient as far as the income we bring in. And it, like, as I mentioned, it takes more time to make the sack meals, so our labor costs do go up. We have to use more packaging, so our, our packaging costs go up. And then also, we participate in a program that the federal government calls offer versus serve, where when every kid goes through the lunch line, they, they're required to take at least three items, and one of them has to be a fruit or vegetable. If there's items they don't like, they can turn those down, cuz we usually offer at least five items. And so that's money-saving. If, if, with the sack lunches, we just have to put everything in everybody's sack, and so if they get things they don't like, they throw them away. So we also have a lot of food waste and increased food costs there. And then also, if more kids are at school, more kids eat meals. And that, that increases our revenue. You know, if you can think about it, preparing a pot of spaghetti, if you make it for thirty people, or you make it for ninety people, your labor time is pretty much the same. So the more kids you feed, the better the bottom line is as far as revenue. As far as my staff, most of my staff agree with the things that I've said, that they'd really like kids to come back to school, the pre-COVID Friday. There are a few that say, "No, I really like it." Actually, a lot of them say, "I really like it now, just because I get Fridays off." Most of our part-time staff just have Fridays off. Most of our contract staff work a little bit extra time Monday through Thursday, and then leave a little early on Fridays. And they like that, but every one of them that I've really talked to, they say, "You know, I really wish kids would be back, we can give them a better lunch." So, that's kind of where we stand. Any questions?
Thanks, Sherry.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate you. Mark, come on up.
I've prepared mine are written, so sorry that I have to read, so I don't go over my time a lot, but thank you for allowing me this time to address the school board this evening. I acknowledge that each of you have a difficult decision regarding the Friday schedule. It's important to note, we have 4,851 students eligible for transportation in our school district. Transportation buses, almost 3,000 students Monday through Thursdays, and about half that many on Fridays. Transportation has many types of routes. We have our regular school routes, special education routes, preschool routes, midday kindergarten routes, activity trips, and occasional field trips. These routes and trips are coordinated with school times, amount of students on the bus, availability of buses, and bus drivers. Transportation has limited resources, so it's critical to coordinate our various bus routes, activity trips, and field trips. As you can imagine, bus scheduling can be very complex and requires careful planning with the resources we have. Generally, it is required to have at least one hour, and on the west side, one hour and ten minutes between secondary and elementary routes, in order for our buses to utilize both secondary and elementary routes. Why do I tell you all these, these things? Because transportation logistics is important. Other things to consider are the state's requirements to have our school bus, bus routes funded by the state of Utah. In order for a bus route to be funded, it is required to have at least ten students riding the bus each day. Special education routes require to have at least five students riding the bus each day. Our routes have many more students than minimal, but when new routes are to be considered, they need to be designated, designed to meet the state of Utah requirements. As you can see, designing and scheduling bus routes to meet state requirements can be difficult. My staff and I have gone through a few Friday scenarios, in terms of transportation. Some of our scenarios would require additional school buses, but bus drivers, and even bus aides. Some of our scenarios can be very costly due to the increase in resources. After my analysis, from a transportation perspective, I have three recommendations out of five that we came up with. The first recommendation would be to utilize our current minimal day school day on Fridays for both elementary and secondary schools. There would be no increase in transportation costs, and we could also do half-day kindergartens that day, as well as some preschool. Our second recommendation is to stay with our current Friday schedule, because there would be no increase in transportation cost. Our third recommendation would be a, again, to utilize our current minimal day schedule for Friday for elementary, and an optional in-class for all secondary schools with a start of 7:40 for secondary, it would have to change, for secondary students. This would also, we would not be able to do midday kindergarten or preschool. This scenario would increase transportation's annual cost, cost by approximately almost $90,000, due to an increase in bus driver hours would be needed on Friday. In conclusion, transportation is here to assist you in making this decision. If you have any transportation questions, I'd be glad to help.
Could you tell me that third option again, then?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing.
Our first option, after analyzing it, that there would be no increase in cost in transportation, is to utilize the minimal school day on Friday. So that's like we have, you know, the four hours.
That's what you mean by minimal.
Yeah, we usually have that right before Christmas, and once the other time, right when the school lets out. That's our minimal Friday. And so that's a four-day for both elementary and secondary schools. There would be no cost in transportation, as well as we could do midday kindergarten. I don't know how we're gonna do midday kindergarten if we do something different, okay? Right now, we don't do midday kindergarten, is that right, Julie? Okay, that's why I got Julie here, or preschool, but we could on that scenario. The second recommendation is to stay with what we're currently doing, because there has been no increased cost on that. And our third recommendation is, again, to do, to utilize the current minimal school day for elementary, and an optional in-class day for all secondary students, but they would have to start at 7:40, because we'd have to bring them in. Does that make sense?
I still don't understand that third option. Can you say that one more time, the third option?
The third option would be a minimal school day, which is our current minimal school day for elementary.
So, so required minimal school day for elementary?
Required minimal school day, okay, very good, thanks for clarification.
About 8:30 to 12:30, right?
Uh, that, that would, yes, they would come in at 8:30, and elementary would be getting out at, at 12:55 and 12:45 for La Pointe, and, and 11:45 for Eagle.
And what was the increased cost?
The increased cost is approximately, I had to factor that out, that the increased cost on that would be an additional two hours on Friday for forty-five routes, at an, at an average hourly rate in my department, times thirty-three days, which are thirty-three Fridays, would be about $90,000. Does that make sense?
Quick question, did you run a scenario on K8?
Yes.
On a minimum school day schedule with, with just high school students with the optional?
Yes. I have a scenario with elementary minimum day, which is the four hours, a middle school minimum day in, required, and then an optional two-hour day at the high school. Now, we would not be able to do half-day kindergartens or preschool. With that scenario, the scenario would require high school students to come in at a regular time and leave two hours later. This would require three new high school bus routes to the Jensen area, to La Pointe, Tridale, White Rocks area, and to the O'Reilly area. Okay, that, those would have to be new routes. The routes would require at least ten students on Friday to be funded. Okay, that's an if, that's a little bit iffy there, and it would be, you know, an optional in-class learning. Students could be on the bus for an extended period of time, they could be on the bus up to an hour, an hour and a half, because these would be new routes, they'd have to service that whole area. Does that make sense? So the O'Reilly would be everything south-west of the highway, and then you would have White Rocks, Tridale, and La Pointe would be another, and then you'd have to go to the east side for Jensen. Now, that would require three additional route buses that we don't currently have, because the other buses would be used in getting the other kids home during the other time, as well as some additional bus drivers, three for that. And that cost, if I factored in the, the new buses, you know, it elevated the cost quite a bit, but with new buses and hiring bus drivers, that could cost $408,000.
Your mouth's open.
So, so I'm still, so I'm confused, though, because-
Alright, Julie, come on, can I ask Julie, come up here next to me?
We're already busing-
So she can kick me?
Okay, just help me understand. So we're already busing all of our students on Friday right now?
Correct.
So if we go to, some are not required, and some are, why do we need more buses?
Well, if we were, if we're gonna require, if we're gonna get kids home, if we bring them in, and then take them home, we would have to create new routes, because our middle school would get out at, let me look at my times here, at 11:50, 11:55. And getting them home, the buses that have sent the kids home earlier would not be back in time.
Yeah, that's correct. So if we basically, I think he's wording in, I'll try to word it a little differently. So the reason why is because you would have your high school students that live on the west side, that are gonna be going home and on the bus at the same time, and then our middle school's gonna turn it around and get out. So those buses, the sheer distance that they're driving, they would not be able to make it back within an hour and a half to go pick up our high schoolers, is why.
So you're taking some home, the high school kids home earlier, but they wouldn't-
So this is, this is based on if we have a four-hour mandatory for elementary and two-hour optional for the other?
No, it'd be, this would be a, a minimum day for elementary, a required minimal day, and a required minimal day for middle school. And then high school optional two hours.
But what if the middle school and high school are the same?
Uh, then it is, the scenario is the other one here, that one, that one is a little more expensive.
That's a $90,000 option.
Yeah.
Right here on this scenario.
So you're basically asking if middle school and high school stay on the same schedule, and our elementary schools stay on the same schedule, there wouldn't be an additional cost? Basic, or it, we wouldn't need anything, because that would be putting us to a strict minimum day. So our biggest, my biggest concern with routing is to make sure, if we're gonna have our high school on a different schedule than our middle school, we, we can't line those routes up.
Because they're both secondary schools, that's where the concern comes, is that's why, because initially you were saying the opposite, yeah, okay. So it is a problem if the secondary is different?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Mark, this is probably a fair question, but to you two transportation people, both of you, whatever we decide what would be the optimum time to implement it for the transportation district, third trimester or fall of 2023?
It depends on what you decide.
You can't get a straight answer out of anybody around here.
Wherever we had to add bus drivers, we couldn't do it this year, I don't, that would be very difficult. Scenarios where we didn't have to get buses or bus drivers, we could do start third quarter. Does that make sense?
Yes. You'll do anything for a new bus, won't you?
Almost anything. Also, I'd offer, if you have questions, I would be willing to sit down with you.
We, we may be back around when we get to that.
Alright, very good.
Mark, thank you.
Board members, we, we could actually have transportation give us kind of an outline of the different options, and make that available to you before the board meeting where you have to vote-
Please.
-next week. So we, we got some work to do, transportation, Mark. Yeah, right, we'll, we'll wanna send those to the board members, so we'll get together tomorrow, okay?
Can I clarify just quick, Mark? Quickly, just, so all of our bus routes right now have at least ten ridership and five?
Yes.
Funded. I mean, are the bus drivers all? I just wanted, that, cuz I-
Right now, we don't change our routes, okay? So we get an average Monday through Friday, okay? Some of our routes, our secondary routes, sometimes do not meet that ten-student requirement, but because we average it. But if we had to design a new route, and we register it with the state, then that requirement would need to be there. Does that make sense?
Average, it makes total sense.
So you average, you have a-
Right now, because we, we, we use the same geographical route for Monday through Friday, we, we average that. That makes sense, that, that helps. But if we have to design a new one, just for the, you know, two west-side ones and one to the east side, then we would need ten riders to be funded, so.
Superintendent, how long's this break gonna be?
How long do you need?
Are we, are, are we any directors?
Pardon me?
Are we not hearing from any of the other directors that are here?
I think that's everyone that we had planned, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and if, if the board wants to ask directors questions, that'd be fine anytime tonight, they're here. We're gonna release the principals at the break. Directors will be here, so you, you're welcome to ask. They, I've, I've prepped them, they, I said, "Don't be surprised if you're asked," so they're, no surprises, we're good.
Principals, we appreciate you coming tonight. We know we kinda put you in the middle, because the, everybody has their own opinion of, of what they want, but we wanted to hear from you guys. We didn't wanna make this decision without hearing from you guys. So I hope when you get back, your staff is all well-pleased with you. I think you've done a great job of giving us their point of view, and, and that's what, and that's what we wanted. I don't know if it's made it any easier, but they, we appreciate you being here. You want five or ten minutes, board members?
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Just to all the principals and stuff, I've had so many parents ask, "What do the teachers want?" And so this community really wants to know what the teachers who are in it want. And so I just, I wanted them to know that they just, this community is really supportive. And so I just wanted them to know that.
Thanks, Denise. Board members, we're, you're gonna lose the principals, so if you have a question for any of them before we take a break, now's the time. Robin?
Do they have anything else they wanna say that they wanted to follow up?
Hey, they had their three minutes, come on.
You know, you sometimes have to come back twice.
Principals, do you feel like you've had the opportunity to say what you wanted to? Thanks, we'll re-adjourn at seven o'clock, straight up.
Okay.
I thought we'd be out of here by seven. Meeting's only scheduled for two hours.
It's a long three minutes.
Yeah, we're gonna, what we're gonna do, we're gonna catch check for it, no matter what.
We're gonna do whatever we want.
We're gonna do whatever we want.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a whole, it's a...
The different groups that are listed there. All right, so let's jump right into section one. And, um, in this protocol, you're gonna do some independent work, okay? And, and then, um, when we get to the discussion piece, we'll, we'll be able to talk about what you've come up with through the discussion questions, right? So, a lot of what we're gonna do for the next, um, oh, 35 or 40 minutes is going to be some independent work. So, section one, we're gonna dive into the student survey results, and you're gonna use the student survey dashboard for this one, the data dashboard. As you independently study the data, respond to the following items, okay? You're gonna notice there are just three items, three boxes. The first one, um, as you look at the data, you're gonna write one or more observations that catch your attention. Just anything in the data that, that is, uh, grabs your attention, or it's interesting to you, you're gonna write it down, okay? This is gonna get you into the data. The second, the second item, after reviewing the data, what do you wonder, or what questions do you have, right? So, again, you're just focusing in the first segment on the student, um, survey data, data. And the third one, what does the data suggest, okay? Based on the data, what is the will of the students? So, you, you will, at that point, just, just, uh, write a brief summary statement of what you think the will of the students, uh, is. So, we're gonna, we're gonna set a timer for eight minutes, and when we get to that point, we'll check and see if you need additional time. If you need additional minutes, show me on one hand, right? Whether you need one minute, two minutes, three minutes, and then we'll extend the time.
The different groups that are listed there. All right, so let's jump right into section one. And in this protocol, you're going to do some independent work, okay? And then when we get to the discussion piece, we'll be able to talk about what you've come up with through the discussion questions, right? So a lot of what we're going to do for the next oh, 35 or 40 minutes is going to be some independent work. So section one, we're going to dive into the student survey results. And you're going to use the student survey dashboard for this one, the data dashboard. As you independently study the data, respond to the following items, okay? You're going to notice there are just three items, three boxes. The first one, as you look at the data, you're going to write one or more observations that catch your attention. Just anything in the data that grabs your attention or is interesting to you, you're going to write it down, okay? This is going to get you into the data. The second item, after reviewing the data, what do you wonder or what questions do you have, right? So again, you're just focusing in the first segment on the student survey data. And the third one, what does the data suggest, okay? Based on the data, what is the will of the students? So you will, at that point, just write a brief summary statement of what you think the will of the students is. So we're going to set a timer for eight minutes. And when we get to that point, we'll check and see if you need additional time. If you need additional minutes, show me on one hand, right? Whether you need one minute, two minutes, three minutes, and then we'll extend the time. You may be done after eight, and then we'll move on, okay? Are there any clarifying questions?
This isn't on board books or board docs?
No, it's not.
It's in the email?
It's the email I sent you, yes.
So is the student section only one page?
It's just a single-page dashboard.
All right, I'm just making sure.
The objective is you're comparing, right? You're comparing how the different groups respond.
We're just looking at the dashboard.
That's right. Right now, you're just looking at the dashboard, okay? And there's a copy in your folder if you don't want to go online.
And this is it, correct?
Yep, that's it. Does that one say, yep, students, right on top?
Student right on top, yeah.
So look closely at the data and how the different student groups compare and answer the questions. Okay, Jason, you got eight minutes.
Okay.
So the student one is going to be our shortest section. Does anybody need more time?
Oh, I thought we were moving on to the rest. Sorry, I'm a parent already.
I guess you can. Are we all done with the middle school section? Okay, let's jump into the next one then, if you haven't already. So parent survey results. This one will take a little bit more time, but let's stick with that eight minutes if you want to reset it, Jason. Again, just write, it's the same prompts, right? Write down one or more observations that catch your attention. After reviewing the data, what do you wonder? What questions do you have? And what does the data suggest? Or based on the data, what is the will of the parents? Okay, so jump right into the parent. Okay, on to section three. We'll reset the timer, okay? Section three. Section three, the board is working with the staff survey results. Now, board members, there's two sets of data here, right? There's the teacher survey data dashboard. When you're looking at that, that's only teachers in the district. It doesn't include any other staff. To get information on how other staff groups or other employees responded, you have to go to the results. And there's a link on your protocol to do that. And if you scroll down, I've handwritten so you know which groups are responding. So on that one, you could almost skip the teacher ones because you've already looked at them on the dashboard. However, there are other issues you can look at if you want to, even for the teachers, okay? Board members, when you're looking at the teacher dashboard, the interesting data on the left-hand column does the math for you if you're trying to add up the percentages, right, in like options. So on the left-hand side, the math is done for you.
It does the adding for us instead of trying to do it in your head.
Oh, I was just adding percentages. I'm almost done.
I'm almost done.
Anybody need more time on this section? Okay, let's roll into the final one. The final one is looking at the student performance data review. The questions are just a little bit different, I mean, they're similar, right? The first question, uh, or the first, the first box reads, right, one or more observations that catch your attention, that's the same. Um, after reviewing the data, what do you wonder, what questions do you have? That's the same. And finally, what does the data suggest? Based on the data, what do we know about the performance trends of our students? Okay? This is the final section before we get into discussion. Okay, add a couple minutes? Tanya? Two minutes, Jason?
We're not writing the book.
Sorry. Take your time, we're not, we're not hurried.
Yeah. My bedtime's in ten minutes.
I will tell you, that's the quietest forty minutes I've ever heard from this board.
This is the most important part to me.
I agree.
Jason, make sure that timer's running this way, my mother put me in timeout. It goes on forever.
Still too warm, oh, it's like about, uh, thirty more seconds.
No, my mother's generation didn't know timeout, that came along with my kids, I guess.
So, President, I would, I would recommend that we go ahead and, and break for, uh, a little supper. Is that what you called it?
Supper.
And, uh-
Last supper.
And then we'll come back and, and begin the discussion segment. So as quiet as, as it's been the last forty minutes, I think the, the, the last segment of this meeting will be a li- a little more talkative. Be good.
How much time do you think, Superintendent? You want to, eight fifteen, is thirty minutes long enough?
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Maybe even less than that, that's, that's a solid, probably twenty minutes.
Okay, we'll, we'll reconvene at five after eight then.
Yes, sounds good.
Do we each have to answer or do we not answer? I'm just saying our names up there now, I'm like, do we have to answer?
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do a little, a little distributed leadership here. So each of you are gonna take an item and just lead out in a conversation over that item. And, uh, but yeah, we, we wanna kinda, I think it's important for you to hear what- What you have to say, so yeah.
Lunch clock's running, let's go.
All right. Uh, salads are in the fridge in the break room.
Okay.
The waters are in the fridge. Do you want to stay focused?
I do, I just wanna get down. No, I can talk.
I believe it's probably locked.
Oh, all right, I see. So, we tried to talk about who should present that policy, the line change policy. Oh, separately, that's a new should. What? Don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. Do you want Dean to do it? Dean said he would, right, Dean?
Dean can do it.
He can do anything, bud.
See? Dean, present the line change policy for a meeting on the eighth.
There you go.
I'll listen. I'm good.
I don't talk.
I'm getting through it.
Okay.
You want to-
Okay, so I'm updating the bigger poster.
You retired, what kind-
So we're gonna give a net without structure, we can do that, so that'll be in there. But I was thinking, wouldn't it be cool, bear name, also- The kids' names. Like- That I had like a character-
That was a net and all the kids' names were on that fish.
Oh, yeah, I've s- I saw that too. Is that a netting? But I was just thinking, wouldn't it be cool because the name is the s- the name is, is the lesson. The name, the name, then all this, what we learned so much about. How important the names is. The name, so I'm just thinking, what if, what if we did like a-
Or more characteristic-
A characteristic of- So if we had just like a, like a thing, you know, major six, maybe something, maybe seven, something like that. And then you could do, and if I got your name, that'd do, I don't know, their name. And then somebody even could write, I mean, they could even write it or, I don't know, not be pretty that way. Or if they could do like a, somebody could say Jenny's kind. And then we could write, then Jenny would have her name and then that characteristic or like- Or, you know, a, I don't know.
Marvin, did you want a diet coke?
There's a lot of important things.
No, I can, yeah, yeah. Do you have Dr. Pepper?
What was that? No, I'm just kidding.
I got to a hundred and fifteen on my whole.
Sure, you're good. I, I just put this over.
This long?
This long.
Oh, right, yeah, it's a, it's a long burn. Renee, would you like some peanuts?
I did not have to ice out all this time. It was the easiest surgery, but the longest rehab.
The easiest surgery. Really?
Yeah, rehab's good.
Renee, would you like some peanuts or anything like that?
No, I'm good. I ate before, because I've been to these marathons before.
If you want them, great, if not, you're sitting there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
No, I got some emails sent anyway.
Forgive my French, the whole reason I came in.
Oh, yes.
You were being nice.
The way it is.
See, at my age, that's understandable. You go for one thing and go, oh, squirrel.
I, thank goodness I got my computer and my phone.
Yeah. But, there we go.
Because I've, I've actually got things done, so-
Well, good.
Yeah.
That's, I'm making a list on what I need to get done. When I get home, what email I need to send, so at least that's a little bit left there.
Ooh.
Do either of you guys want a drink or anything?
I'll be grab this one.
You think I'd be so drunk?
Yeah. But thank you. I have snacks downstairs, I'm happy to go scrounge up some goldfish, or some trail mix, or. They got us, they got some trail mix, we're good.
Basically, gone is trail mix.
We're in good shape.
Just feel bad and don't miss the way we're going to break.
So you do not get salad?
Um, I think that they might have, uh, I think Phyllis miscounted, so. Then it's totally fine.
So you eat goldfish?
So, yeah, I'll eat goldfish. And I'm fine with that.
So when all those new, like, retirement letters are coming through because of the bonus again, I'm like, okay, I gotta catch up.
Yeah.
Well, it's a rough one of teachers right now, a lot of people are very, very, very unhappy.
Yes. I've, I've been in this district a long time, and congratulations, it's really good, but it's just hard. And I think, and it's not just here in some aspects, I think there's some specific issues in our district, but I think overall education in the whole country is hard, because, and COVID is part of that, and it's just still, we've got kids that are dealing with COVID as well, like adults. And it's hard, yet we're trying to just still hold the hard line, and they've got so many emotional issues that go on.
It's like the. Same as that, that social loss for that white period.
They did, and.
Was it, I'm gonna use the most, I think the kids and especially the. Carol.
Yes.
That is, but.
I know it's like, it was press recorded over the top, I'm always nervous, so I started a whole other recording, so I don't overlie.
I would keep up with that. Don't, don't, don't try to continue it, 'cause Phyllis does that, she mercies it.
This work is all, it's getting three though, can you just sort of find Dean, or the longer, just three sections.
Are you cold, do you want me to put you in there?
No, I don't want to.
Dean was sort of pushing buttons, but it wasn't actually making any. Like, you gotta hit the override. We've got double piston it over here, so.
All right. Have a little swig, a little swig of one, and then a little swig of the other.
How many people do, do you digest them?
Where?
As compared to other. Because. To me.
How'd you do on time? What did you say?
I like that one. I keep going upstairs for each stop.
Okay, I know where to go.
Is it drinking choice?
Basically, wasn't a, what was the zero?
Just be diagnosed.
But I'm gonna, then I want their whole new back, their whole new ad.
You ready? Yep. We're ready. We are reconvening from our second break.
I know. One to the knife.
Welcome, everybody, um, back, we're gonna get back into it and see if we, um, can keep making headway, so, discussion, I'm gonna turn the time back over to the Superintendent.
Thank you, President. So, yeah, the next segment, um, we've got some timelines in the protocol, uh, those, those are a little flexible, okay? If, if we need more time on a particular topic, um, so be it, okay? So, if you look at the top of a page, well, it's the last, the last page of the protocol, under section five, discussion, um, number one, board members will, will preview and write a written response to each of the following questions. So we're gonna take just a few minutes, um, to, to give you time to read the questions, and, and just write a, write a, if you wanna bullet, if you wanna write some quick notes, whatever it might be, just jot it down, because what's gonna happen is, when we go through the discussion piece, we want you to have something like in writing, right? Something that you've pre-thought out, that you've written down, so when it's your turn to share, um, you're not put on the spot, okay? So that's the purpose of taking some time to write, to jot down some thoughts for each question. So after you jot down the thoughts for each question, we're gonna come back, and each board member will take one of the discussion questions and just, just lead out, like, start with your thoughts, and then we'll go around the table, everybody can get their thoughts out, and we'll end with the board member that started the que- if that makes any sense, right? So each of you will lead out on one of those, so let's, let's take, Jason, just set the timer for ten minutes, and let's see where we're at at ten minutes. Go ahead and work through the questions, okay? Go ahead and work through the questions, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you.
Should I tell them all?
Sure.
Board members, I think our assignment, we're just gonna go A, B, C, D, E, if that's okay? Let you know which section you're gonna be.
So, tell me again what's the protocol on that.
So, what you're gonna do is, is start with you, so share maybe your response. Um, you can go around the horn. Uh, Mistalyn's gonna, gonna, kinda record everybody's, everybody's thoughts and ideas on these questions. And once we get done with this, we're gonna just open it up for whatever conversation the board wants to have, okay?
Per question?
No, no, no. When we're done with the five questions. So, so let's kinda stay on the questions for now, because we're gonna have an opportunity to talk about whatever the board wants to address after, okay? Does that make sense? So, Denise, start with yours. Go around the horn and then you get to, you get the last word, right? And then we'll do that, we'll, we'll replicate that with each of you on your question. Good? Can you start by reading the questions so everybody knows the question?
Okay.
Use your mics because it's online. I can't read very well. I'll show you some of your mics.
Okay. Discussion questions, A. Should the perspectives of one stakeholder group be given more or different consideration than the perspectives of others? And then it also says why or why not? So, what made me think of this is, I think, yes. Reason why, a different consideration, because what's good for kindergarten through fifth or eighth is different from what the high school needs. So, what's, it's not the same goal, and the teachers, you know, need different tools. That's my why, is what I think. I think first grade's different than 12th grade. I think that's all I wrote. I'm good now. Robin?
Turn your mic on, Rob.
Yep.
I could listen a lot at this meeting, so I'm a little hesitant, but.
No, tell us what you think.
So, I took this question as looking at the one stakeholder group. And obviously, I mean, you filter things through, by your experience and what, what you, you know, what you know. So, I was a public educator for 25 years. I coached for 15 years. So, do I think that the education professionals, that group, is that what we're talking? I mean, I, that group should, um, the administrators that talked today, the building administrators? I mean, it's like going to the doctor. The physician is the expert. Um, so, yeah, I think they should have a large say in what they, it's, it's their profession. They are the professionals. So, I, I feel like we should listen to that. And obviously, uh, looking at the data for the kids, I know, I know that we looked at mental and emotional besides the testing scores. But, um, I love students and I love their comments, but, you know, um, are they the most reliable? Uh, because of, you know, their developmental, where they are. So, anyway, I guess, I'm, yes, I feel like. And, and the parents are super important as well. I mean, I, it's hard, but if I were the patient, I don't think that I should have as much say as probably my doctor who's been to medical school for 12 years. I don't know. That's how I'm looking at it. I'm just saying that's, I'm just filtering it through my lens, so.
Okay.
I say, I say no. I looked at this on the perspective of, uh, the survey. Those stakeholder groups, uh, each of them have their own opinions. And most of them go with their own opinions, not facts. You saw the teachers, what benefits them. You saw the parents, what benefits those individuals, especially the high school students, what really benefited them. That's what they voted for. So, I say no. And, and my reasoning behind that is, our goal is not to appease one of those groups, but to make sure we choose what is best for the student.
All right. I, I feel mixed on this, um, because I, I want to say initially, my gut reaction is no, no stakeholder should be more important than another. Every, that's why we are trying to hear from everyone. That's why we asked for a survey from everyone. That's why we want everyone's input. And everyone's input matters because the decision affects everyone. And so, that's my, my initial gut, is what it says. But there's also part of me that feels like just by sheer numbers, there's a lot more parents and students involved than faculty. Um, just by sheer numbers. So, to me, if I'm saying everyone is equal, then the parents do play a heavier weight to me because there's just more of them. And the other reason is just fundamentally in principle, ultimately, I believe that parents have the first responsibility for their child's education, that they should take, I'm not saying they all do, but every parent should take first responsibility for their child's education. And I trust that parents are intelligent people. And I tru- trust that they do know what's best for their children. Nine times out of 10, a, a parent knows what's best for their own child. Um, and I know, I don't mean to, I don't mean to disparage the, the professionals and their opinions. That's why, like I said, I think everyone's input is really important. But as, even as a patient, we talk about with doctors, I had a doctor advise me to take the RH negative shot after. In fact, he ordered it. I was his patient. He ordered it and he insisted upon it. And because I was educated and understood that I was not RH negative, I refused multiple times. And if he, and when he finally looked at my charts and realized the confusion, he realized that he would have killed me. So, I think that we need to be personally responsible. And as parents, we need to be personally responsible for our children's education. No matter how educated someone else is, no one is more invested in my child than I am. And so, for me, I just think that we, it's, it's an insult to our parents to act like that they don't know what's best for their own children. Um, so, I, I think it's important to, to value everyone's perspective in this decision because it affects everyone.
I also, I also said no. Um, I don't think one, one group is more important than the other. Um, because, and my reasoning behind that is, is perspective to education. Um, I think we all know that if we read to our children at night when they're young and learning how to read, that they become better readers than if the parent doesn't do anything or take, or take part in that. So, I think the students have their, um, part that they bring to the table, definitely the parents, and definitely our educators. And so, uh, I, I weigh each one's opinion, um, equally for that reason.
So, Denise, you get the final word on this one.
Can I rebuttal?
Yes.
You're in charge. Go ahead. So, I, I agree, Tanya. I, I think you do know, I think parents do know what's best for their children. But, um, we represent all children, not just our own. So, I think that's our job, is to really look at all kids. And it's, we heard over and over that our high-risk children are the ones that don't have a voice. They don't have the parent's support. Well, not, not always, but there may be circumstances in somebody's life that. So, I just feel like, um, I, I mean, there's gonna be those kids that I just know, that's our, that's one of, we advocate for all children, not just. And I, and I know, I know what you're saying, and I totally agree with, you know, you do know yourself best, you know your body best. Parents know their kids best too, and, and I just.
I have to apologize if it sounded like I was disagreeing with, with your, I think we're all just sharing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but.
What we value. That's all. I don't think someone else has to think like I do.
No, and I don't, I don't, no. I know, and I just, just think that maybe that was something I wanted to bring out. But the question is different consideration, not more important. I think we should make that on the record too. It's not more important, it's different consideration, which is a different question and a different perspective. So, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm just looking at it like this way. I wanted everyone's information, and I value everyone's information on this. It helps me determine what is our problem, what helps, what doesn't. And so, for us to tackle that big problem, I look at everybody's, you know, the more information, the better. But to identify what our main problem is and our main focus, what are we trying to get out of here, I gotta look at everybody. That's kinda where, so. That doesn't mean I, you know, there's not one, I just like looking at it all.
Yeah, and, and, you know, th- this has been a good discussion. Um, as, as I was writing this question, the thing that came to my mind was, okay, there are some specific things, like, for instance, you know, I, we've, we've had questions on, okay, what, what's better, like, like teacher-student contact time? Or the, the value of sharpening their saws and, and having prep and collaboration time to be ready for instruction? Well, um, we're probably not gonna ask the kids that question. And, uh, maybe the parents aren't gonna give us the best insight on that. Teachers definitely are gonna give us some good insight on that, right? Because it directly impacts them. Um, and, and there's other questions, uh, what, what works best for your family, right? Well, that's a question you gotta consider the parent information on. So, I, I, I hope what we get to is that really, it's, it's all important. And, and I think we do have to, to, uh, to think about the specific items that, that pertain to the various groups, right? Um, anyway, I wasn't supposed to have a word in this, but I, I kinda felt like I wanted to explain maybe why that question was there, okay? All right. Um, who had B? Was that?
Robin.
Robin?
Okay, so the question is, what patterns did you notice as you studied the written responses? Sorry. One more time. What patterns did you notice as you studied the written responses? And, um, I'll just start out, very polarizing, um, very passionate. Everybody's point of view were valid. Um, and, uh, I, in the comments, it also had that our survey did not address a full-day Friday or a four-day week option. People wondered about that. I'm just giving out. And then, um, And then, um, people are, uh, passionate about education and tax dollars. That's what I got out of it.
So, I, uh, I looked at it the same way. I saw individuals pretty well split in some areas of this response, and they were passionate on both sides. And they were almost belligerent in some ways, that they, they were the only correct individual. And that, that's the part I, you know, I hate surveys. And that's the part I hate about it, is, is you, you give them a, a platform of which to, to share their emotions without facts. And so, I, I appreciate the, the opportunity we have to, to discover what they want. But it, it got tiresome, tiresome reading them.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, um, as I read through them, the same thing, like, it, they were so, there were so many all over the board. There was not a consensus. It was everywhere. And the thing that really stood out to me was that there were so many logistical considerations to every single group, that there's just no way to fairly consider one group's logistical considerations over another, because it would just be picking favorites, if that makes sense. It, it, because everyone had a valid reason, right? Like, I don't, I'm not gonna judge other people's motives for their reasons. Everybody had a reason that it affected them, and very valid, good reasons, in every stakeholder group. And so, um, it made it, I, I think that's probably what I got the most from it, is that I probably have to set that aside and make my decision based in principle of what I think is best for kids, um, ultimately, because, um, there's no way to take care of everyone's needs, and there's no way to pick a group over, it would be wrong to, to say that one group's needs were more important than another.
I, I noticed the exact same pattern. Things were split, um, pretty much, um, clear through with the parents and the students favoring this, this, the parents and the students favoring the schedule that we're currently on by a very slim margin. And depending on what data that you looked at also, um, and so, I've come to the consensus, which doesn't help this decision any, that I think you and a school district can be successful on whichever option that we, that we choose. Because for me, in my mind, the pattern that I notice is that every person that you talk to, you can take a teacher in one of our schools, one of them needs that prep time. They sharpen their saw, and the instructional time will be out of this world because they have that. Your next teacher will take that extra hour and a half and spend it with that student and, and really put their heart and soul into, into that. And maybe the prep time for them is no big deal because their life allows them to do that later or at another time when maybe another teacher simply doesn't have that option because of kids, family, or living situations that they have. And so, um, that didn't help at all. Your turn, Denise.
I think you led, or you ended exactly where I was leading. This survey didn't really help me at all, because it was almost 50/50 on everything. And I love the every, I love the responses that everybody got back, but I had two that didn't want it, two that did. And so, it's really gonna be hard to decide. There again, my thing is, is what are we trying, what's our end game here? And how's the best way to do it? The survey was, it didn't give me any information, you know? So, it was really, I hope all our surveys are not like this.
It told us that our valleys exactly split, right, Denise? Our parents.
Yeah.
Our kids, they lean a little bit one way, and our teachers, and lean a little bit the other way. But that's the way that I feel. It shows that our, our valleys pretty well split. So, if we get, if the valley gets behind whatever decision is made, parents, students, and, and staff will be successful with the, with either one. And I think our test scores show that a little, little bit, that things are starting to creep up. We're only into this, how many teachers? Andy McKay told me a year and a half ago, we'd made the biggest mistake that we would ever make as board members when we went to this schedule. She caught me in the hall and told me that. If you guys read her letter, her opinion of that today is different. And so, you know, where would we be another year from now? I kinda bounced out of term. Sorry.
You're good. That's all, I don't know what to say with these surveys, because they're almost 50/50, so.
So, one, one thing a survey does do, it gives, it gives ammunition, I guess. Hey, you know, you look at, you look at our position as a, as a board. Uh, if we were to, if we were to go with the survey, we would, and we allow them to vote on it. Doesn't matter if it's 51%, it's 51%, we would obviously stay on the same schedule we are. That's where it is. And so, that's, that's the challenge that we now face is, is are we going away from parent opinion? Because when you get into parents' opinion, you're up in the 70-plus percent range. And, uh, of, to stay where we're at today.
High school.
High school, across the board. If you look at it across the board, if you add it up, across the board, numbers. And so, that's the challenge that we have today. You know, I see the same thing. I, I see. I, I see it makes it somewhat difficult for us to make this decision. But we have to turn back to, to using this, this survey in such a way that we also, we just spent an hour on some, some facts. And those facts give us just as much information, if not more.
Okay, let me wrap up, because we're on written, written, um, responses. So, written responses, um, I think that's what you're talking about, that, that's where it's really split, right, Denise?
Yeah.
Making sure. And, um, uh, people like status quo. It's the other thing that I could take from that. People are, change is hard. So, that's my last bit. C is you.
C. Given all the data.
Before, before you start, Todd, so, so we've already talked a little bit about C, just in this last discussion. And I'm gonna contend that, um, the, the survey's not 50/50. There isn't one area that's 50/50.
No.
There's a lean in every single subgroup that, 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 there's a lean in the data. So, now, with this item, I want you to pay attention to the lean for each subgroup, because it means something. It's communicating something to us, right? How parents, the, the lean i- at the high school level is a lot different than elementary. We have to pay attention to that. And not just for parents, but, but there's even a lean difference between middle school and high school students, right? Pretty significant, uh, those leans are pretty significant, we know. But, um, but, so let, let's really pay atten, when I use the word lean, I use it intentionally. Because with the exception of like the students and maybe the high school parents, um, they're, pretty much, it's a lean, and we gotta pay attention to it. It may even be a slight lean by just a few, a few percentage points, right? Now, um, we surveyed people. We didn't ask for a vote, okay? You gotta, you gotta keep in mind, they're not voting. They're, they're giving you input and data, and you have to make a decision based on that. But what I want you to do tonight is pay attention to the leans, okay? So, with that, Todd, let's, let's turn the time over to you.
Okay, I, uh, oh, sorry. Given all the data, how do our stakeholders lean on preference between our current Friday schedules, A, and a Friday schedule with four hours or mandatory in-person attendance for elementary students, middle school students, and for high school students? I think, I said, most of them were, were, with the exception of the elementary, were leaning towards where we're, where we're at on the current schedule, is how I seen that. And, and it's a very small split on the parent's side, even in elementary. With the exception of looking at the teachers, and that leans the opposite. What we heard tonight from the principals was opposite from what I saw in the survey, in some ways.
Okay, let's keep going around and then we'll, yep.
Tanya.
Okay, um, so, on the numbers for that, I saw that the high school, um, parents and faculty strongly leaned towards keeping the current schedule. I saw that the middle school slight, the parents slightly leaned towards keeping the current schedule, and the faculty leaned against keeping the current schedule, so it felt split. And I saw that the elementary school, I guess there is a barely a lean for the parents. I saw it as split 50/50, but I guess it's 51%.
Really.
But it looked really close to me. So, for me, when I initially looked at it, I thought they're pretty much split for the elementary, and the teachers leaned to go back to the mandatory schedule. That's what I saw.
Man, ditto to what she just said, um, and with the figures that she stated on the leans. The only thing that concerns me a little bit, that I would bring into factor to play in the kindergarten through fifth grade, is our reading scores. When I look at them, when I look at them reading scores in K through five, they concern, they concern me a little bit. But that wasn't necessarily the question. But as close as the, as the draw is, then I have to bring a little bit of data into it. But that's the only piece of data that I see, and we'll discuss later in the evening, in the, in the discussion, maybe other ways to work on that. But I, I agree with exactly what Tanya said.
That's what I was looking at too, is, is the high school leans a little bit more to the four-day schedule? Middle school, a little bit more, but it's pretty close. And same thing with grade school, it's the other way. So, that's, going back to that, you know, what's, what people want at K through five is different from what people want at the high school, and the middle school's in the middle. So, that's just, let's make this as close as possible in all aspects. That's, I did, I noticed the same thing.
Okay, here's the data. This is what stuck up to me. The lean is this. Mandatory in-person learning, about four hours with an early release for all grades. Forty-two point nine percent for all employees. This is the majority. This is the, this was the clear winner for another. Thirty-eight point five percent elementary teachers. Forty-four point one percent middle school teachers. High school teachers, 30.4%. And then you go to the parents.
Are you on the staff?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, you go to the parent's survey, and like you guys said, they, they lean a little bit different. But then you go to the, are you open to different elementary and secondary Friday schedules? The clear majority, this weird democracy, 58% no for elementary. This is parents. 56% no for middle school. And then this is where it's just barely, 49% no for high school. So, they want continuity. They want the same schedule. But they're leaning differently when you're talking about in different area of our survey. So, for me, that's, um, pretty telling too. I mean, they love simple and consistency, not, and I don't mean in a simplistic way. I'm just saying, make it consistent for your life. And then also, I worry about, the other thing that stood out to me is the Friday schedule causing childcare and supervision issues. And if you add all those together, the always, usually, and sometimes, that's a lot of folks that it affects. Their day, their, um, childcare and supervision issues. In, in every, I mean, the one that, the high school's the least amount. But if you look, if you add sometimes, usually, and always together, you're, you come, that's a lot of people. And I can give you the numbers if you want me to add that up.
But on the other side of that, Robin, there, there's 46, 55, and 65 that's saying never.
Yeah.
And you, you add to, to that rarely, and then it puts you over 70% average.
Yeah, well, I just point that out. That's, that's about, that's split though too. If you do the math, if you don't take the rarely.
Pure baby, Todd. You get the last.
Yep.
Hi, baby. Holy cow. So, I, I don't know. Yeah, as you think about where we're at with this survey, it goes back to question A, preferences over, over what group? And it, and I, I don't know, Superintendent, if we've really drawn a straight line down the middle of all these groups and, and given us a, a number. Is there anywhere that that's, that's at?
Well, no, no. I mean, I, again, I think.
I just.
I think this is feedback for you as board members, and it wasn't ever intended to be a vote.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's, I jokingly say that with a vote, because when you look at, when you look at, uh, it doesn't matter what political office, you know, if, if we, if we, 100 and, how many 107 bills? I believe that the House?
Education bills?
No, just total bills. If they did a survey on every one of those bills, or took a vote from the public on every one of those bull, bills, could you imagine what it would do? So, we elect, each of us individually, have been elected, to make these decisions. And, and I think the survey's all right. I'm not totally against it, but I, I just don't like the, how they come out oftentimes. But we are elected based on those that elected us hope we will study the, the issues, that we'll look at the facts and the data, and that we'll make the best decision. And if they don't like the decision we make, they eliminate us. That's the way it works. It's not a popular vote every time. Because my opinion is, surveys are great, but they do not always make the best decision. The best decision sometimes is made with being the hardest decision. And it may frustrate a few people. And in this case, it's gonna frustrate either 60 or 40%.
Well, Todd, I, I appreciate your, your take on that. The, again, you gotta think about what the purpose of the survey is. It's simply to inform you as the elected official. That's it. This survey is not about, um, again, it wasn't, it's not a vote. It's not about forcing you guys to do what, you know, it's just information.
Just more information.
You as board members have to, that's, that's why we're here, is so that you can digest it and make sense of it, right? That's why we're having this conversation. But in the end, next Wednesday, you're gonna show up. You're gonna cast your vote. Yep.
It's a week early. Is that right?
It is next Wednesday, right? So, uh, yeah, so.
It's an eighth.
You know, um, I, I, I know it's hard, right? I mean, these are hard decisions, because there isn't, there isn't a, a black and white, right or wrong. There's good information, lots of information. I've, I've, I've probably never seen so much information, right, for one issue. And now you guys, in the end, I can sleep at night in that you're gonna make an informed decision.
Yeah, I'd have told you this was a great survey if every group would have been 70-plus percent. It was a done deal.
Well, I, I would tell you, it's, it's not the polarity that determines how good a survey is, right? It's the quality of, of information that you have to work with. This is just, this, this is a highly pol- polarized issue that we're dealing with. And it won't be the last, right? We've had them before, and, and we're gonna have them again. But, uh, anyway, did, did we get the last say in, Todd, on that one?
We're good to roll.
Back to.
Okay, number D, Tanya.
All right. So, I spent a lot of time in the data, because I like it a lot. The testing is really important to me. Like I said, I felt like things were so split, and the opinions and the needs were so all over the place, that to me, I really wanna see, how are we doing? How is this working? And so, I was go, I went, first I was going through and just writing down every single test where it looked like it was at. Um, and by the time I got to the end, I was just really happy, because it looks like we're testing really well. We are not going backwards, that's for sure. I, I wouldn't say that we are at the state level yet, but we also have not slipped at all. So, for example, um, we were talking about our reading scores, K through five. You in a school district at or, at or above grade level, you in a school district 2020, in 2018, before COVID, we were at 60%. In 2021, um, and 22, after we've been on the schedule for a few years, we are at 60%, same scores. In 2018, uh, In two thousand eighteen, uh, below grade level, seventeen percent of, uh, our school district was below grade level. Uh, today we are at fifteen percent, so that's an improvement. And then well below grade level in two, in two thousand eighteen, we were twenty-three percent. And today we're twenty-five percent, so that's a slip. But I felt, as I went through like each year, it looked very consistent. In every test, we looked very, very consistent. And ultimately it told, what I took from it was just what we've talked about when we talked about the AB schedule. And this again is that the schedule is not what matters. And I think ultimately, um, I just, I just want to do what's best for kids. I want to do what's best for them in the long run and use their time the most efficiently and wisely as we can. I don't want to waste anyone's time chasing after something that may or may not even give the return that we're hoping. Um, so to me, this data looks really, really good.
My turn? I agree. I'm, um, um, really excited coming out of COVID and where we've been and where we've headed with our test scores. I think, I think that, um, they've started to improve. I think that as we continue to get, um, I think the program is called ladders?
Letters.
Letters.
Yep.
In place, I think it will continue. Um, we've seen some growth at the high school last year that is, is out of this world. Um, I think they're a little bit ahead of some of the other, other schools and so, um, personally myself, we're headed in the right direction and I think it's going to continue to get. Um, our testing scores are can, going to continue to improve.
So there again, I, what I can see with our test scores is there's nothing one way or another that shows one way or another. I mean, I do see improvement. You know, a little bit on some things, but I'm just saying there's to me, there's not a, a direction either way. There's not, yes, oh, that's it, we've got to do it this way. So there again. I mean, yeah. That's not, looking at the test scores, it doesn't give me a red flag or it doesn't give me a green light. So that's kind of where I'm at on that. So.
Is, is, okay.
Go ahead, I'm done, I'm good.
Denise, I agree and I'm feeling the same way you do. Um, is the assumption that of that question, is it that we're attributing the Friday schedule to? I, no, okay.
Absolutely.
It's, it's just a number to look at to inform.
Okay, so let's just say that our test scores district wide or in, in, in more areas than not had a, a three to five or maybe ten percent slide. Right? Um, well, that would be real concerning to all of us, right? But we didn't see that.
Okay.
And you know, if, if you look at the high school scores and Christie's pretty happy, she saw double digit increases from a year ago.
In growth.
But a year ago, we were really low. It was, it was like pandemic effect scores. Um, the good news is though, is we have rebounded to pre-pandemic levels. If you look at the scores, right? Um, they, they, they rebounded and they rebounded in the current schedule, right? They didn't rebound in a, in a, the schedule we used to be on. So here again, is it, is it the schedule or what is it? It's, so if anything, um, as I look at the data, you know, from, from my perspective, um, I think the data is pretty flat.
Yeah.
And i- is, is that good or bad? Well, um, am, am I happy with it? I'm happy that we've rebounded, but I'm not happy, you guys know where I want to be, right? I want our kids to be at or above the state average. And so we have some work to do, whatever that means. We're doing it. Uh, and, and there's a lot of potential, um, influences on student data. We have implemented a lot of new programs since the pandemic, right? We have new language arts curriculum, we have new intervention programs, we're implementing an MTSS framework. I can go on and on. There's so many things that we've done to impact those scores. I would also argue that we may be in an implementation dip right now in language arts, meaning we've got a new program, we're in our second year of implementation. We're a lot better at it this year than we were last year. You're looking at data from last year's assessment results. We're already a lot better. We have better buy-in right now than we did a year ago. Those scores are going to come up. In my professional opinion, they're going to come up. Now we'll, we'll see when the proof's in the pudding, right? But, um, but that's, so, so those are just some, there, there's so many things to consider. Absolutely, the assumption is not that those are caused by, uh, the, the Friday schedule. It's just, it is what it is, given everything we're doing.
So the, the other part of the question is which, um, data are most relevant and concerning? And I think just rigor for me, uh, math and English, we got to, like you said, we're, we've got to, we've got to make some strides there. I mean, I think our teach, they're, we're doing our best and people are working hard, but I think just even the beginning, just, just the comparison score is where we're starting at. And then just this might be in for, interesting to you guys, I don't know if it is or not, but I just think when you look at the graduation rates, what did WASATs do that, that kept them so high? That would be relevant to me. Why aren't we looking at what, and they are early out on Friday. Duchesne is early out on Friday, Carbon goes on Friday. Emory's early out on Friday and part of Toilla's district goes early out. Anyway, I just think we ought to be really looking at other districts too and, and just what's working for them? What could we bring back? What's going to make, ri- rigor to me is huge, so I don't, whatever the schedule is, if there's more rigor, more dis, you know, that's huge, so.
Okay, I, thanks for answering that, but it's flat to me too.
So I, I don't see it flat like you guys do it. No, eighty-seven percent, one point percentage in graduation is huge. My, that's the biggest we've had since twenty seventeen statistically, eighty-seven percent is, is really.
Our graduate, when you look at our percent, like increase with graduation rates, we're outperforming the people around us.
Yes.
Percent increase.
Obvious.
You go back a few years.
No, every year. We're ahead every year. Doesn't matter what year you look at, we're ahead. We're ahead of every year you look at. So that's the reality. Why are the kids happy? If you look at the survey and their, the questions, they're happy. That's why they're staying in school. Makes a huge difference, I think, my opinion. And so that, that was the one that stood out the most to me is, and I know we don't just look at high school, but when you look at all of these, when you look at it, uh, you know, trying to get back to where we were in twenty nineteen, if you look at twenty twenty-one, you obviously have the dip. But we're getting back or ahead of where we were in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And so that's, to me, that's impressive. I contribute that to sharpening the saw. As we heard from tonight, the teachers, my opinion is most of our success is the opportunity for these teachers to, to train and teach. Quality.
Are you talking just high school or are you talking to all of them?
All teachers have the opportunity to sharpen their saw at every level right now. If we take that away from them, it'll be a challenge.
I'm going off with the, most of the younger schools.
Up to third grade.
Recommended, they want. Me, I got all the principals wanted except for high school.
I'm just saying it. I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying in my opinion is sharpening the saw more important than the seat time. My opinion is sharpening the saw is more important. I take that from my own employees. If they sharpen the saw, they're better employees. They do better. They get more done. That's just the reality.
I don't know that I have very much to add, other than I did forget to mention that when looking at ready math, it really made me happy because it looked like as we went along, we got better and better. As we go from third grade up through sixth and seventh grade, it gets even better and we're outperforming in ready math. We're outperforming the national numbers by a big margin.
Yeah, when we get up into the upper grade levels, our kids do really well. And if you look at the kids, we move out of red, right?
That's impressive.
That's, we're doing a good job with that.
Yeah, and even that, if you look at that compared to the national average, we're killing them on it. It's really good. So I was excited to see that.
Yeah, so sorry to jump back to that, but that's where our high-risk kids, I kind of wondered, are they the ones that are testing low or not? If they are, then how are they, they improving? So, just my question.
Well, with math, there's evidence that we're doing a good job of moving kids out of the red as they get older, as they, as they progress through the system.
And, and I could be wrong in my assumption that high-risk are always the ones that are low testing, because I could, that may not be accurate.
You get the final word on this, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, we're going to move on to number E. After reviewing all the data, what do you wonder? What questions do you have or what else might you need as you prepare to make a decision on the Friday schedule?
Ms. Dillon, you'll take good notes on this, right? We're on, we're on a short timeline now, so if there are things you need, we got to get right on it.
My, my que, my question is, do you, I'm going to give my response in form of a question. We all need to sharpen our saw, our teachers need their time to, um, their prep time. The students and the parents like the schedule that we're on. That's two of our groups. We heard over and over tonight that every school's problems is butts in the seat on Friday. I don't think that the na, the hour and a half that you give that student and take away from the teacher is any earth-shattering thing that's going to happen. If, if our teachers blades aren't sharp and the quality of teaching is, drops from where we're at now, then we've lost ground. So my question, board members, is there a way to keep the schedule that we have and the path that we're on and put butts in the seat on Fridays?
I agree, great question.
If, so would, so would school be, I'm going to throw a couple of things out there and then I'm going to shut up. So a couple of thoughts I have is, is the two hours on Friday mandatory? Or is if your grades are below whatever, that school on Fridays mandatory? Otherwise you get to choose. There's probably a million different things out there. But what I've heard tonight is is that fifty, whatever percent that is of our teachers would like to have their students back in their classroom. I think it's fifty-one, fifty-two. Well, we don't need to argue that, it's a very slim margin. Our students and our parents want Fridays left alone by a very slim margin. So is there, but the complaint that we heard everybody talk about is the kids that need to have their butts in the seat on Friday aren't there. Is there a way that this board can accomplish that and keep our teacher prep time and give our families the free agency that they want?
Well, Dave, you just want it all.
You can't have all of it.
I don't know, like, I, I think that's our whole, that's our whole point to this process is, is there a better way?
Yeah.
You know, we don't have to just say, we'll go back to the old way or we, the old way wasn't doing any better. That's, we've already proven that. So the reality is, is there a better way? Can we as a board come up with some suggestion? I agree with you, Dave, that helps give the teachers butts in the seat, but also allows them to have the time to sharpen the saw.
So let me, let me comment real quick because there's, there's another issue here that I thought was pretty clear when the principals addressed the board. And, and it's, it's the idea, when they say we, we need, you know, tier one, like tier one instruction is important. Right now they're give, because of that hour and a half, and really that's, that's the difference. They can't, they cannot do like tier one instruction and you can't do it with just part of your class. To do tier one, you got to have everybody there. So they're, what, what the principals are saying is our, we can, we can perform, our kids can perform better academically if we have that fifth day of tier one instruction, okay? So that means in, you know, for, for language arts, for instance, it's, it's probably about a ninety-minute block that they need all their kids to do that on Friday. And, and that's, that's what I'm hearing from teachers and principals is that at the elementary level, that that is kind of the deal breaker for them. Like that's where they can make the difference for kids. So that's, that's different than intervention time. It's different than just having the, you know, the, the kids that are failing come in to get help. It's actually moving everybody, all kids, right? You're taking about eighty-five percent of your student body with tier one and you're shifting and moving all of them to higher levels of performance. That's what, that's what I think that they're asking for is, is to be able to achieve that. And I do think they believe that if we have that back with our new curriculum and the, you know, the, the things that we've learned, that we can do a lot better than we currently are. So just a thought, okay? And I'm going to have one more thought I want to share, and I've already shared this with you once before, and then I'm going to be quiet and let you guys talk. Um, the last thought is, is just this concept or idea that when kids are in the, in the early elementary grade levels, so kindergarten, first, second, third grade, maybe third, they're going through this process of reading to learn, okay? They're still trying to figure out, break the code and to become, you know, uh, readers to the level where they can actually comprehend and gain meaning from texts. Some kids get a little bit sooner than others, right? But what we know is that somewhere between about second and, and the end of third grade, kids make a shift from learning to read to reading to learn. And that's an important shift because when we offer things, um, online, for instance, virtual learning, there's a high dependency for kids to be able to read so that they can actually have success with it because they're more independent, right? Virtual learning is more of an independent learning, uh, mechanism, modality of learning. So, so that shift is, is, it's pretty important. And then the older kids get, right? The more solidified they are in their ability to read to learn, so the better they can, they can attack, you know, independent, online, virtual type activities. So it's just a consideration for the board, okay? It's not, it's not the end game necessarily, but, um, but as a, as a professional educator and, and you know, having studied reading and literacy, that is a concern I have. Um, I, meeting that goal, that goal that we have, right, of, of our kids performing at or above the state average on testing, I, I will tell you, it will be very difficult to get there without that fifth day of, of in-person learning for those kids because of the tier one approach. I mean, essentially, you know, you're not going to hear me say, well, we're trying to, to, you know, we, we've been cut a, a fifth of our instructional time. No, that's not true because we have, we have online, we have, you know, we have opportunities for kids to come in. But what is true is when you look at our pacing guide with our language arts curriculum, we can only get four lessons in a week. That's all we can do. Um, i- if you try to, to push more reading instruction in those four days, a lot of kids have, um, well, it's like a kid that's conditioned to run a mile, but now we're going to ask them to run a mile and a quarter and they just run out of gas. It's, it's an endurance, it's an academic learning endurance issue. So trying to get five lessons in four days, we're already pushing them hard to get four in four days. It's hard every day because we're pushing them. So, so that's at the elementary grade levels, that's the issue I think the board needs to, to process. That's what the principals are telling us, okay? It's a different issue than what we've already talked about around the table, so please consider that um, moving forward in this, in your, in your thinking and your conversations, okay? And, and when I, now, having said that, you know, I'm going to support whatever this board decides to do. And, and we're going to make it work. But that's, for me, that is, that tier one, five days, the pacing, if you figure out five lessons a week versus four for an entire school year, there's a big difference in the amount of, of learning that can happen. So, so with that, that's, that's really all I'm going to say.
What's the? I mean, who says they're not just going to mellow out and do the same in the five days that they've been doing?
Their principals are going to keep them.
So we have systems in place right now we've never had in place. We, we do C K L A walkthroughs, we have pacing guides in place. Principals go in, they do drop in, not scheduled, drop in visits. And one of the first things they do is they find out what lesson that teacher's on, they have to be within three where they're actually written up. They got to be within three lessons. So that's never been in place in this. So, that's never been in place in this district. We are monitoring, not just student learning, but we're monitoring teaching, pacing, where, where teachers are in the curriculum. Um, we have a whole system to do that. It's, we've, we've never monitored instruction like we are today, and not even close. We have coaches working directly, uh, closely with teachers on, on, on their teaching strategies and methods within these, the, the new curriculum that we have. It's pretty systematic. It's very systematic. So, we, we know, if teachers aren't doing what we're asking them to do, we have systems in place to catch that, especially at the elementary level right now. But also, at the middle, we do the similar things at the middle level. It's just a different game.
It is. Yeah, I, I can see the difference. I mean, I, you know, I look at the coaches' responses on the high school level compared to, you know, coaches' responses are, and I remember, I still consider Coach Priest the best coach we've ever had here. Uh, you can look at the wall and find that out. But the reality is, is he got kids participating that that would've dropped out of school. And, and when you look at the coaches' responses, they're keeping those kids in school, because they're able to come in on a Friday, catch up their work, or come in on a Friday, make up some work. There were, I think that has to do with our graduation levels. So, you are, those two big extremes. And, and what we're looking at. And I think Robin mentioned earlier that, that parents aren't really excited about different schedules. But what outweighs the other?
What's the worst of the two evils?
Yeah, what's the worst of the two evils?
Because you're gonna make them upset, so I think the board has to do what's best for kids. Okay? And I, I think that you could argue, looking at all of the information and the data, that what we're doing at the high school seems to be working pretty well, right? I mean, that's, that's pretty evident. There's some that don't like it, but there's many more that do. Um, our, our learning data, that rebound is impressive. In one year, ten percent gains, even though, I mean, it's, it's, it's quite a rebound. I'm convinced that, and, and I have two, I have two kids at the high school. That's a, a small sample, right? But I will tell you that in, in our, in our conversations around the dinner table, it's, the teachers that are just flat-out good, effective teachers, guess what else they're good at? Virtual learning on Fridays. They have high expectations. Kids are learning, right? They've got it figured out.
I agree. I, I've got a few more than you there, but
Yeah.
I hate the same thing.
Oh, you've got a ton of grandkids there, don't you?
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. Yeah, so still a small sample, but, but the, the point is, is, is if kids are prepared and we have good virtual learning and kids can, can benefit from that, our pacing, we can move forward in our instruction, right? At the high school level, you might, you might offer a little more new content during the four days and a little more independent practice on Fridays. It works.
So, at what grade do they become efficient in reading to learn?
Well, like I said, it usually starts, I mean, the early ki- the early learners, it's as early as second or third grade, but I, I think, I think it's a pri- process. As kids get older, the better they get at it.
So, it continues to improve, but there's a cutoff point that you say, that fourth, fifth grade is where, if they haven't got it by then, they're in trouble.
Well, the research says is not by the end of the third grade. If kids are not proficient in reading by the end of the third grade, it's very highly unlikely they ever catch up.
So, this could
Which is unfortunate.
This could make a huge impact six, seven, eight years from now, if we don't give them that time.
We wanna make, we wanna make them to get to high school.
Yes, getting, getting kids proficient in reading before they leave elementary school is absolutely critical. It's imperative. We, we are, it's malpractice for us not to do everything we can do to get kids to be proficient by the end of third grade in reading, and I'm gonna extend that to fifth, just by the time they leave elementary school, if they're proficient readers, they're gonna succeed all the way through, no, almost despite what we do. They're gonna be successful.
I agree. That's the world we're in today.
Whose question is it?
It was Dave.
So, I got us way off track. I'm, I'm sorry.
Dave just asked us all, he just asked us all to reply.
And I kinda wish the soup would've waited till I talked, because this is, no, and the only reason why is because you did touch on a lot of stuff that I'm talking about. What I can see from all of our principals, except for the high school, and even, the even Eagleview, everybody else said, we, we recommend mandatory Fridays. Our teachers are willing to give up prep time for mandatory Fridays. And so, my question is, is why are we doing optional when we should be doing mandatory? My opinion. And then, am I going to do a disservice to a first, second, third grader to benefit the high school? Because once a student gets behind, I truly believe it's so hard to get them caught up. So, if every, almost every school that I look at, and it's the ones that are, are doing the day-to-day work, recommended tonight, we want five day, I'm having a hard time convincing why we wouldn't do five day. And, and I love what the high school's doing, but we gotta get them to the high school. And I, it doesn't mean that the high school can't think outside of the box and do that next, you know, that, you know, there's another day that we can do something else. So, with my question is, why optional? Why not mandatory? And is it really, did I hear this right? If they do online, they're only doing about twenty percent of the work and not, is that, is that right? Did I really hear that right, that I, when I took college classes and I had an online instructor, I hated it. I wanted that person that was, you know, right there. I learned more. They're gonna get that in hi- in college, so I feel in high school, we need to give those kids that. But is, was I right? Is that wrong? Did I hear that wrong? Are they really only doing twenty percent of the work online when it?
We had
One of the schools reported that.
We had mixed, we had mixed reports on that. But, but yeah, it's not, it's not
So, that's
It's not great anywhere.
That's a disservice.
To our children.
And then another thing, are we preparing our kids to go into the real world? I have to go to work. Right now, I'm working six days a week. So, are we do, you know, are we preparing these kids for the real world, where it makes them optional on Friday? I know it sharpens that tool. Our teachers are amazing. So, that's my thing, is what I'm seeing from most of these teachers is we're hurting our kids if we don't go five days. So, tell me
Are you talking about from the bottom to the top?
Yeah, so how do, it's a disservice if, so tell me, why the high school, why would we do a separate schedule for the high school? What is the main goal there? I know we wanna get them to go higher and better, but we gotta get them there. So, I know it's asked, like, what was more questions and what, you know, what do I, that's what I need. I need to know what our end goal is. A twelfth grader is different than a first grader. And my thing is, is I don't wanna hurt any kid to get him up there. So, and I'm, I'm listening to what our principals and our teachers say. They're the ones, you know, in it every day. And I love what Christie said, our teachers definitely need time and need preparation and that kind of stuff, but so I guess my big thing is, is what's our end goal here? I, I'm kinda new to this, so I don't know why we'd ever do optional. It sounds like that was never, you know, why would we ever keep optional? Why wouldn't it be mandatory? I kinda bounced around right there, but I'm, now I'm, my mind's swimming, so. There's my questions. And that's
My turn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or do you guys wanna respond, or?
Yeah.
I don't know what we're doing. I don't know where to press.
Yeah, I totally made them. Yeah.
Your turn, Robin.
Okay, I totally agree with Denise. I just feel like we would do a huge disservice. Um, I think one of the surveys answers were, it's educational neglect. And that really hit me, um, and then I had to really think about it. That was just a response, but I did listen to what they said tonight, and I think that was, um, and I have tried to be super, I know, I know you don't think so, but I've I have been, I've been trying to be super neutral, and I wanted to know where everybody was coming from, but I guess my questions are, why would we, I mean, it's so close. They really, the s- the majority want the same schedule. Our parents want the same schedule. The teachers want it mandatory. I think it's a nightmare for them to have to do that optional. Would they get more time if they're not on canvas as much? Um, you know, Christie said it's canvas-heavy, but I think they're, they're, they could make it work with, if they're not having to be on doing the duo thing, which is for those students that aren't there. And then my other, I'm, I'm just so, our job is this mission, which is all students. Our goals are, our values are work ethic. I don't think if, I don't think what we're doing is, is, um, I don't think we're being true to our mission statement and our values if we just say, I mean, the only ones that I could see that, from the data and from talking and look, listening to Andy McKee, she's the one that maybe should be different, is my, looking at all this. So, my questions are, um, should we look at Hattie's ranking, um, influence of effect sizes also? Because when you look at digital learning, it's way down there. So, I don't know if that should be part of what we look at as well? As teacher to, teacher to student, classroom discussion, all that's way higher on, so I just, I just think there's so much benefit, and they talked about it tonight, was, um, teacher-student interaction in the classroom. I just, and I think that's what public education is, and, um, I don't know, I guess, I don't know. I just think that we are doing a disservice to especially our at-risk population. Um, I just feel like, we, we provide, as public education provides so many services. Now, we feed children, we, on the Wasatch Front, they have, um, homeless, they provide homeless facilities and all sorts of things. I just feel like, um, I, I know it's just, and it's early out Friday, I just think, I just think they need to be in class. The teachers want them in class. The constituents that are talking to me want them in class, so. So, I don't, I'm not answering the question. I just had the same questions. My concerns are the optional. I don't, I think we should simplify and rigor. Um, why did we do this in the first place? That's my questions.
The Friday schedule?
Why did we do it after COVID? Why, why did every forty-one districts go back but us? I just, I just don't get it.
I think we've just waited longer than the other districts.
We, we wanted improvement. We didn't wanna stay the status quo.
But see, I, I, I
That was our goal, is we wanted something better.
Well, we tried it, and, and I think we
We tried it, and it hasn't failed. So, my turn. So, uh, if you read Andy's question, I wish she would've been here to present this tonight. Because the things we're saying right now, the reality is, is, is options, the ability for the kids to, to excel and exceed, and they earn a day off, those type of things, online, options, uh, all of that, all of that stuff that the high school keeps people going, that's the reality. That's why kids are graduating at a higher rate than what we have before. And so, those are good positives. I, I, you know, I can't say negatives about why, why she enjoys that two, two hours virtual on Fridays allowed the A-V-A to open the testing center from seven-thirty to noon. It gives, it gives them some options. Our high school said, first year, they went, they made some major changes from the three classes. They made some changes and made it much better. And so, if we continue at the pace, if we continue to improve, we continue to work on the things we're doing today, will, will we improve at, at that level? Will it continue to improve? Will kids continue to wanna go to school? And, and why are kids in school, at high school, how many of them have learned everything they need to learn by then? In this town, we, we assume they've learned it all, and they wanna go out into the oil field and get a job. That's just kind of their, that's been their mentality. And so, do we keep them in school based on that? If you go to any shop, workshop, IFA, doesn't matter, there's kids working on Fridays that are, they work every Friday, because that's the option, but it keeps them in school. So, I, I'm just saying, keeping them in school could be important. My, my biggest question, I think, is, is how do we, if we take and go away from the method we are today on the Friday optional, the teacher time, you know, I know it's only an hour and fifteen minutes that the grades go gains. But that hour and fifteen minutes, you said, is important. But the reality is, is, is that replacement of sharpening the saw at all levels, how do we replace that? I, I think when we say butts in the seat, I still think it has a lot to do with where we are at on why the kids are where they're at today, and why they came out of that hole. And I, and I just, I just hate to take away the ability. I, I just don't feel that teachers will will sharpen the saw after hours, after contract, or however you wanna put it. It just doesn't happen. So, I, questions on how can we do it? That's the key. How, how can we continue to sharpen the saw? Is there a way possible? I don't know.
Tonya?
Do I have to?
No. Do you want me to redirect this?
Yeah.
Because I botched it. This is what the superintendent, I wanted to provoke a line of thinking. Um, first of all, and there's a place for me to do that down below. Let me reread the question, because I messed up. After reviewing all of the data, what do you wonder? What questions do you have? Or what else might you need to prepare to make a decision on the Friday schedule? They're giving us the opportunity of, there's some data that you want, some information that you want, board members. Now's the time to ask for it. In ten days, we're gonna be back in this room making a, making a decision, um, that, um, we're gonna be divided on two. It's not just the community, it's our board.
Right.
And so, is there some information that you want from these guys? If there is, that's what they ask us for. And I led us down the wrong path.
I would like to see the busing schedules and the, you know, the brainstorming on that.
Yeah.
Like what the cost of base stuff?
To board members. That's fair.
Okay. Any other things, board members?
I'd like to take from the two directors that are still here, three, three directors.
So, let's save that for four, but we can do that tonight, okay?
Yep, we can. Item number four.
Item number four, yeah.
Oh.
Todd, is there any more information that you want?
I don't think so.
Denise?
I've talked to Ms. Nurdin about this, and she couldn't answer, like, my whole thing is is with the fifth day at the high school being the way it is, and I understand sharpening the tool and everything. I wanted her to tell me what she really recommended for her school, and she couldn't, so I don't, I don't think I can get an answer to that.
Maybe we should talk to her in private.
I have.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Yeah, and I'll talk to her again, but that's what I'm saying. But yeah.
The problem with it is, and I said this earlier in the evening, Denise, I think each one of them principals have their, have their own idea. They're re- representing a lot of people that work for them, and every one of them is trying to bring you the majority of what their staff is telling them. And, and we can't, and we have to respect that to, uh, a s- a certain extent, and so, they, um, did I give any, everybody the opportunity?
Yeah, I think she definitely, I put her in a corner on that, so I, I agree with you, Dave, that that was her present. I think that's the reality, is is I see that she has to respond such. Just makes sense.
Yeah, of course it does.
Yeah.
We all, we all do it all the time with, um, the people that we, we work with, and so, she, she has to make work whatever this board decides to do.
Right.
So, by, by taking a, a strong position right now and the board goes the other direction, you've already put her in a losing spot.
Well, and I just wanna say, um, I just wanna give her, like, a big, like, credit, huge credit, because I feel like as an administrator, she implemented what we asked her to do, and she did it with enthusiasm, and she went out and set to work to make it work more than, I mean, I, I haven't seen every se- I don't wanna say more than any principal, because I, I haven't been in all of their schools. But I definitely saw it from her, and I've been so impressed. And it really impressed me, her leadership ability, because I think no matter what we ask her to do, that's exactly right. She is gonna buy in, and she is gonna make sure that her staff buys in. And to me, that's leadership. And I would hope that whatever decision that we make, we do the same thing.
Yeah.
That whatever decision we make, we lead. And we all buy in, and from that moment on, that is the decision, and we are all in support of it.
Yeah, good point. And I do believe that Christie is gonna find a way to make sure her teachers sharpen their saws, no matter what this board decides to do. She'll find a way to, she'll, she's an innovative thinker, and she believes that that process is very important. So, I'm not worried about, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Board members, oh, sorry, Robin.
There is one more thing. So, I want the documentation about nine ninety, our, and, uh, nine ninety hour, um, sorry, one eighty days, nine ninety hours. Our exception we're doing for USBE. I'd like that.
We don't have an exception.
So, I feel like, so, when they're, how are we?
I just don't feel like we are seriously being honest about our attendance-taking then. And I know it's not about attendance, but when they're getting credit for all those classes, and they're only maybe going to one class, that's why I was asking that question. So.
Did you get the documents I sent you?
Uh-uh. Did you send all of us?
I think, did you guys get them? I sent them to the whole board.
I did not.
Just the, the documents on,
I thought we had,
From the, from the,
USBE, because we're not doing the same.
On the different methods for taking attendance and,
Oh, yeah, you did.
The guidance documents. So, yeah, you, you need to look at those, Robin, because they, they are, it explains it. I mean, it's, we're, we're well within,
So what if, just what if USBE goes back to a hard line on that? I guess we'll just change, right?
Then every, every online and alternative school in the state would,
Be in trouble.
Would have to fail to exist,
Comply.
Or do something completely different. Those lot, those rules were put into place well before,
I know they're arbitrary, I know that.
But they were put into place to allow schools the flexibility to offer blended learning or online learning, like more than a decade ago. That's what, that's what our, our own UON and, and so,
So I guess I have that information.
A login, a login is, it meets the,
Standard.
It meets the rule. Just a simple login.
Okay.
Board members, I'd encourage you to, you know, we've talked about a lot of things tonight. Let's not go home closed-minded, or we're definitely stuck on this, or we're definitely stuck on that. There's lots of options, there's lots of options out there. Wonder if our high school was to stay on the schedule that they're on. And the other schools, the other schools go back. I'm not saying I'm stuck on that. I'm throwing something out there. You take care of your reading, you take care of some of the other things that we've talked about. Yes, there's a thing in here in the survey that says, there's a, there's a definite, we want all our schools on the same schedule. Board members, if you haven't faced the fact already that fifty percent of the people are going to be ticked off no matter what we decide, or displeased, then you're kidding yourself. So why does that make a difference in our discuss, decision if that's what's best for our kids? I'm just throwing something out there. Let's keep learning, we got ten days. Let's make the best decision that we can for our students. I'm going to turn the time over to the superintendent. Robin would like to hear from your other directors.
Yeah, and, and then, once, once we hear from them, we can open it up to any other discussion the board wants to have. But Mindy, let's start with you. Why don't you come on up and just share your thoughts, and they want to hear from you, so.
You directors, please be brutally honest. You're not going to hurt our feelings.
I thought you were going to say really short, and that's okay, too.
It's the, it's the, it's the time and the hour. Don't, don't leave something unsaid today that you wish ten days from now you'd said. We're, we're, we accepted this tough role that we got when we signed our name on the dotted line. So tonight, let us have anything that you want to give us. Board members, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Dave, first I need to apologize to Denise, because she informed me that I showed up in Union colors to you into meeting, and I've been embarrassed all night about it.
Now you know.
I know, I know. We got to switch. He's from, he's from Roosevelt. Anyway.
No, it's blue.
Union considers their color gold, not yellow.
Anyway, I want to thank you for, for allowing us a moment to speak. I think this is, like all of us, a highly charged issue. And I have a student at high school and have certain beliefs, and, but I've, I've really, this whole meeting kept thinking, okay, in my seat as a director, what do I really see as the pros and cons? And I, I really will keep it short. I just want to address three things. One thing, on the pro side, from my seat, it's really easy to schedule training. It's on Friday. And I know I'm not pulling them out of the buildings and away from students. I work a lot with counselors, social workers, and CTE teachers. So that's one thing that is really nice about our current schedule. Todd, I'm so glad you brought up graduation rates, because I have such a bragging moment for a minute. I'm going to be a proud parent. February is CTE month, and I am so proud of the work that our CTE teachers do. We have, we lead the state, oftentimes in CTE concentrators and completers. And if you want to talk graduation, last year, all of our students who completed a CTE pathway had a hundred percent graduation rate. We didn't have, lose a single dropout. And of our concentrators, we had a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. So, and that's just due to how many classes they take in CTE. Want to raise graduation rate? Let's expand CTE. So I'm, I'm really proud of the work they do. Having said that, one of the things, and I will, I'll be a hundred percent, we'll make anything work. We will be a hundred percent supportive of whatever decision this board makes. One of the challenges, to be completely honest, that we've faced in CTE, it's really hard to send home work in a CTE class. If it's computer programming, Chromebooks can't run that complex software. They can't run complex software in engineering. They can't do their wood projects, their welding projects, their sewing projects. So CTE has been a concern for me, because honestly, we've taken away twenty percent of the teaching time for CTE, and that's one of my, my jobs is to advocate for my people. So that's a concern that I have with our current schedule. Then the second thing that I've talked to counselors and social workers about, and as Superintendent Woodford and BA Johnson can tell you, I'm, I'm the champion for the underdog. I always kind of like to fight for the underdog. So I, I know the majority of our students are going to be fine on whatever schedule we're on. I do. They're going to be fine, because we have great people that will work to make that happen. There are those outlying cases that concern me. I've, I've asked, you know, what are some of the unintended consequences? And I've heard stories of students who want to participate on Fridays, but they can't. They're babysitting. I have another story, a couple of stories of students who don't have internet access on Friday. They haven't completed a single assignment, because they can't. They don't have internet access at their home. Elementary students with food insecurities that may not come, we're sending more food home on Thursdays. We're even working with some community entities to help provide food for students. So those are some of the unintended consequences that I worry about. And like I say, if we stay with the schedule, we will continue to troubleshoot and figure out answers to that. But those are just a few of the things that concern me. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
A question, when you say food service and those type of things, and, and the underdog, I'm just curious, at what age did those kids stop relying on school lunches and school-provided lunch?
Yes, seniors. So we have, in our valley, we have nineteen percent food insecurity. Nineteen percent of our community doesn't always have a meal on the table every night or for every lunch. And so one of the things that especially our elementaries are focused on is those students, a lot of them are coming in on Thursdays, because they won't, they don't come on Fridays always, to get food, to keep them, tide them over during the weekend till they get back on Monday. And we're, we're going through quite a bit of food. We're going faster than ever. So I just met with Rotary last week in hopes of partnering to have more of that available. But we have students, we have, we have lots of, this sounds weird, I know, homeless seniors that either get kicked out of home, have fight with mom and dad that are couch surfing, that come very food insecure. The, the difference is they're a little more mobile, so they have better avenues to find food than, than some of our younger students.
That's, I guess that's what I was assuming. At some point, they become a little more mobile, and, and they, you know, spend time at whoever's home to eat.
Have I seen hungry kids at high school? Yeah, yeah, I have.
But the program itself, middle school, how many of those kids?
Nineteen percent is the, is the percentage rate across the board for the, for the valley.
For the valley.
Yep.
Okay. And internet, our study shows there's only, there's very few kids that don't have internet access.
That's correct, yeah. But they're, they do exist, there are some.
There, yeah, there were a few.
Like I say, there, these are the, these are the unintended for the few that, that, my job is to advocate for all students. And so those are the students I worry about that may not come from a home like yours, or my, where my students have access to internet and have food.
So are those the same students in high school or junior high that would be out working on a Friday?
Sometimes, sometimes not, because sometimes they don't have a way to get to work, depending on how far away they live from, from Vernal, or from a city, from where it's an offer.
It would be an option for them, right?
May not be, may not be an option for them to get a job.
That's all I have.
I believe we can handle the internet issue,
Yeah.
With some additional communication. So there's a program to where they can apply for reduced internet, and then if that doesn't work, they can get in touch with us and finish the job, so.
Students, their parents.
Their parents.
That's the problem. We have students who aren't living with, that are considered homeless. This case I'm sharing with you is a homeless student, by the, by state definition.
That'd be difficult.
So.
That'd be difficult.
Mindy? Being fat, it's hard for me to think about kids being hungry. Terrors me up. But what, what are them numbers? And maybe that's another piece of information we want. Out of, out of the packet, is it two, four, ten, twenty? I know most of that information is really private, and we don't even want to know that. I guess in reality, in your professional opinion, how many of them can we help if the Friday schedule was there?
We can help on Friday.
You don't even need to, maybe you want a while to answer that, but if there's ten, can we help five of them? The other five are going to be without regardless, because their parents don't care whether they're at school, but all, all of, all of these things.
I think what I can do, President, is to work with the people who are disseminating the food, get a number, and then provide a percentage, so that we maybe are trying to protect some of those families. Provide a percentage of those who would access food. And they do access food on Fridays. They, they do have access. The, the bigger issue is that that's so short of the timeframe in between. We're not always sure what the food's like when they're consuming it later on.
Right, which was explained to us earlier. Thank you.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Mindy. Dean, come on up.
All right, Price is Right. I've been waiting all night. We've spent four Fridays together already, if you look at the timeframe. What, what can I help you all with that has yet to be asked? Or what question specifically do you have? Just opinion, or do you have specifics that you'd like to know? The reason I ask that, I've been in three different districts. I've consulted in every state in America minus two, and multiple countries. So what questions might you have that I could maybe shed some different light towards?
What keeps kids in high school?
What keeps kids in high school? Strong foundation in literacy and numeracy. And if you look at the data, it's going to be what is my perception of the teacher, and what is my motivation, i.e. life plan? Am I tracking towards a CTE certificate? Am I tracking towards a college enrollment? Kind of establishing that why, and getting on that career path is really what's going to make the difference. Do we have somebody that can guide and help along the way? Guidance counselors are crucial for that. Also having a plan set in place that isn't just a fifteen-minute check-the-box, but in-depth of how do I access college scholarships? How do I access college itself? All of those skills are definitely necessary to get through high school. I don't think you can point to one specific indicator. But I will say, in the UN Basin, I have led a high school that went from a D status to a B status. The kids didn't change, the parents didn't change. The only thing that changed was our professional practice. And really, when I look at what's on the table here tonight, it's really how do we adapt our professional practice to best meet the will of the public? At this point, it's going to be an impasse either way. You're going to have two groups that probably aren't necessarily going to see eye to eye, such as the case in our country, such as the case in most places. As we look at making these decisions, I think it's critically important that we leave united, and from that united front, that we employ the most effective strategies with the time that we have. Time is finite in education, no matter how many days a week we go. It's how we manage and utilize that time that is going to lead to better outcomes. And I think our teachers and our principals are engaged in the right work at the right time for the right reasons. Point blank, I don't sign up to work for losers. This district is a winning district. This is a winning board, and I want to be a part of it. I think we've put things in the right place to have as much success as we're willing to work towards. That's why I asked the question, what else could I offer that hasn't been discussed tonight? And I'll pose it again, is there any clarifying questions other than an opinion that you'd like? Do I value early literacy? Absolutely. I'd give a kid a book all day, every day. The kids that experience food insecurity, absolutely, those kids need that. Take it from a kid that had five tattoos and a bunch of bad habits at the age of sixteen, more likely to incarcerate than graduate. What changed my life, Todd, was a coach. That coach got me on the right track with the right people at the right time. And I'm not trying to translate my experience for somebody else, but I wouldn't be in the position I am today had I not had that positive influence. I think that's why all our teachers and all our principals come into this field, is to help be that change agent for others.
Thank you.
Which, I'd like to know, what's your opinion on the optional,
Optional.
Attendance? And also, do you think that we are separating an intended consequence of that with the haves and the have-nots? That's my question.
Sure. So optional, I, how do I even put this? Every school's a school of choice, whether we're a public school, private school, or a charter school. Every school has now become a school of choice, so we have to put forth a product that people want to buy. If we're not putting out a quality product, people aren't going to want to come and receive that. So I think the onus for responsibility ultimately falls on us to make sure that what we do at that time really does have meaning. As far as do I think we're creating a greater divide between the haves and have-nots, it's really hard to say in, in one short cycle. But what I would say is, more kids coming to school every day, at least they get two hots in the spot. They might get two meals in the spot that's safe. If five days out of the week, we can provide that for students from a safety and security standpoint, that's huge. How much academic translation that actually has, I don't think you can quantify it. But if you look at two of the top eleven in Hattie, you're going to go with the collective efficacy, and then basically the students' efficacy, their belief in themselves. That's number one and number eleven. Those two bookends and the strategies within are what we're looking at to employ day-to-day in our classrooms. I don't believe that mandate, or an optional schedule is necessarily going to mandate that those kids come. I think, as several administrators pointed out earlier, a parent can excuse any absent for any reason. We don't live in a compulsory education world anymore, so we're competing against, we're competing against the internet, we're competing against private charter. It's a competition, and I'll roll them up with anybody, anytime, anywhere with this district and this staff. I think whatever decision you make, we will be successful. I don't think you can pick a wrong one. Depending on who you ask, they're going to have an opinion. If you want my opinion, we're going to win either way. There's no other option but to win. That's my opinion of this district, or I'd throw you my badge and keys and walk out. So that's where I stand. I, I stand fully in support of the decision that this board makes. And with our superintendency in place, I think that we have a great opportunity to win. I'm not lying or trying to blow smoke. I, I really do believe this is the best district in the region and the state to be a part of. We're not afraid to change. We're not afraid to try new things. We're pretty damn proud of where we're from. I love it when we show up and people think that the old farm where you can't be a school board president. Showed them wrong, didn't you, Dave? Well, we'll see. There you go, next election cycle, you never know. But no, honestly, I, I've, I've listened to the passion of the educators, the passion of the board, passion of parents. And honestly, I, I think as long as we make a decision and we, we remain unified at the outcome of that, we're going to be successful no matter what. I genuinely believe that.
You're making this decision too easy on us.
Well, good. Pick one and, and go with it, because it doesn't matter if I've been in Roosevelt Junior High, Altamont, Terra. All we've done is win. And I'm not saying that I'm the reason. Those teachers, those groups of teachers focused on the same set of data, the same research studies, really deployed high-level, high-leverage strategies, and we're doing the same things here. We're just starting to see those results come out of this pandemic. And I think longitudinally, we're going to be, we're going to be where we need to be in terms of student graduation and performance on the ACT. Week one in my job here, I put a note in superintendent's door, it said twenty-one. That's the composite average that I'd like to see this district, that we'd all like to see this district at in the next five years. That's a lofty goal, that's a big old goal, but I know that we can get there. We've got the systems and people in place to do that. That's a lofty goal, that's a big old goal, but I know that we can get there. We've got the systems and people in place to do that.
We're wearing down.
There you go.
So, Dean, being that you're the special services director, uh, deal a lot with special education. Um, are there, are there any specific concerns you have or implications in terms of the, the options the board's exploring right now? And the impact for students with disabilities?
Absolutely. For students living with disabilities, uh, the IP is crucial, uh, individualized. You need that individual there to work with. I will say that it is a, um, much more difficult task trying to find the minutes of service, um, given the option of, uh, a Friday schedule. So instead of five days to find service hours, we've got to find those service hours and minutes within four days. Uh, so from a special education perspective, yes, I would love to see students five days a week with their teachers in their classrooms. Um, I do think that that gives that population of students a better opportunity at success. Uh, just because we can more individualize and meet those needs of those students. We can personalize learning at that point.
So what's the average attendance of those, of that group?
You know, I, I would have to get back with you on that, and I'm ha- more than happy to. I know that, uh, attendance for, uh, any of our impacted populations tends to be lower on a Friday, whether that be parental choice, convenience, whatever it may be, but we can get that information.
So we put, we put some safeguards in place for our high needs kids, right? We, we offer four hours of service time for those kids on Fridays. Um, I'm not sure what their attendance is, Dean, we might want to look at that. Uh, but the kids that are not in high needs units, those are the kids we might have a greater concern with.
I was going to say, our mild to moderate students might be those students. Our, our more severe students definitely have the option of four, four hours on a, on a Friday.
Today, they have that?
Yes.
Yeah, today they do.
Through the whole pandemic and everything, we've, we've offered that.
Great, that's, that's great information.
Yeah.
Many of our mild to moderate kids might fall into the yellows or red, um, as far as their end of level testing. But our severe, uh, our severe students have the opportunity to attend in person.
Board members, do you want that attendance information?
I would like it. If it's just me.
Yes, no, I don't know. Yes, Tanya?
If Denise wants it, I think we'll get it. I just, yeah, I, I was just.
If it's not a ton of trouble, can we have that, Dean?
We'll see what we can do with that.
Okay.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
It's almost ten o'clock, President.
Hey, if we stay a while, we'll have some hours in for tomorrow.
So I, I want to share, uh, ju- just one thing I, I think the board needs to be aware of. Um, I. Yeah, we'll, we'll let Ms. Lynn speak too.
She can't talk and type at the same time.
Just, just a sec though, Ms. Lynn. Just something to be aware of. We're, we're going into a new, uh, with the new realignment into a new region. Um, that opens some opportunities for us. One, one thing that we've, we've already had conversations about is. You know, what are the im- what's the impact on, on students who travel a lot? Um, one thing we're exploring is the possibility of having our, our volleyball, basketball, um, some of our sports. Where they can, they can travel on a Thursday, have a Thursday game, Friday game, spend the night, come back home, one trip instead of two. Um, to, to the Wasats front to play. And from a financial standpoint, when you eliminate the bus route, uh, the bus ride. Uh, we, it's not going to be a wash, but, but we can probably decrease the amount we, we ask parents to pay. Is it thirty-five bucks a night now? I can't remember if it's gone up. I think it's thirty-five or forty, forty? Forty bucks a night for a kid to stay in a hotel room? And, and so we potentially could lower that just a little bit, offsetting the price of the, of the bus, the second bus route. So, so that's one thing that we're, we're looking at as a possibility. You know, we'll probably pilot that a year, see how it goes, but, but that's, you know, if, if we stay on this schedule, that's, that's something we're pursuing. If we don't stay on the schedule, we wouldn't be able to do that, because then we'd have kids out for that Friday instruct.
Would they be playing Friday afternoon or Friday, they'd have to wait till afternoon?
They'd be Friday night, just like it is now, and I mean, sorry.
So they'd be out there all day Friday?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. They'd, they'd be, they'd be on the road, it'd be a long day. But a lot of those teams start as early as three o'clock, so you do a late checkout, you get them to the gym. Um, our buses, uh, we have buses equipped with wifi now, so kids can get on their Chromebooks and access their, their assignments and those kinds of things on the bus. Again, I don't know if it's a, it's a, something we're going to want to stick with long term, but it's, it's something that we, we feel like. Might actually help with the amount of time kids miss school. Um, right now, the, the Tuesday, Thursday thing is rough. It's rough, um, for kids to be on that schedule to go. We just did one this last week, right? Cottonwood on Tuesday, back to Twill on Thursday. So kids are missing part day on the day we leave, and we left at ten-thirty in the morning, so they're missing most of the school day. And we get them home at one o'clock in the morning, they're dead tired to, when, when school starts the next day. So, anyway, just, just trying to look outside the box on ways we can, we can at least improve and, and make things better for our kids moving forward.
Have the ADs talked about that? I mean, have they been vetted with our?
So, they haven't had their first meeting yet.
So they don't really.
So it's been internal on our side, this is what we're going to ask for. We just got to go and, and see if it's going to work for other.
I've got a question on that.
Yeah.
Does the counselors work with the ath- the athletes? When my boys were in school, I went and talked to counselors. I made that try light because I knew they were traveling a lot. Do the counselors work with the athletes to make sure their schedules aren't?
Yeah, to a degree. I mean, e- every kid is different.
But a lot of students are playing more than one sport.
Mindy's saying all the time.
Yeah.
Mindy's the one that helped me a lot, because we figured out tennis, they missed more than anything, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just wondering if, if, I as a parent did that, but I.
If the counselors know the students play a sport, uh, they always try to make, especially softball, so either some that are rough, that are more rough than others, tennis softball, that are really tight. And, uh, that's one of the things that, that they train on every, every year.
I can, I can just say for me with my kids, even though they do that. If you're in honors classes, they're only offered sometimes certain tries, and there's nothing you can do about it. And if you play more than one sport, you're also kind of stuck, so.
If he wishes to put that where they should.
Yeah.
How do I know that?
Yep, yes.
And so that, that does present a challenge for certain.
So a- anyway, I bring it up because if, if we go to this, this new way of doing things on Fridays with the Friday schedule, those athletes then. On a travel week, they're going to miss, they're going to miss. I mean, a, a Thursday, Friday, they're going to miss half a day on Thursday, right? They're going to miss nothing on Friday.
Oh, you mean, sorry.
Right? Whereas on, if, if we go back to a traditional Friday in person, they're going to miss two half-days.
More than half a day, because they leave at like, sometimes ten o'clock in the morning, yeah.
But then they're also going to come to school after being on the bus at one o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
On a Wednesday, so. Anyway, just, just a thought, right? That's, that's a way we're trying to make good with, with what we're doing if we continue down that path. But we're not going to make any final calls on that until after the board decides next week, so.
Is it Dr. Lisa's turn?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want me to type for you? No, it's fine.
Isn't that fast?
I tried to think of a couple pieces of information, maybe from an HR standpoint that you haven't, won't be repetitive, but. On Dec- as of December first, we had six hundred and twenty-eight full-time contracted employees. Get your pen out for that, right? Six hundred and twenty-eight full-time contracted employees. Four hundred and seventy part-time employees. That includes coaches and substitutes. I, I think it's important to remember that these part-time, these employees, over a thousand employees, almost eleven hundred, right? These are our parents too. These are our grandparents too. It's, it's not like we have banks of stakeholders that are a- answering questions in isolation. Even for me, I have a parent at, I'm a parent and I have a student at every level, high school, middle school, and elementary, and. And then as an HR director and, and a former principal of eight years. It's hard for me to say this is what I would want because for my high schooler, I would want this. For my elementary daughter, I would want this. Um, and as an HR director, I am compelled to, um, advocate for the teachers and all of our employees. Um, I think we need to remember, um, there are so many factors that are outside of our control. We can't control if kids are getting food or not. We can't control if they're going home to, um, a single parent mom or dad. We can't control, um, whether there, there are so many factors we cannot control. We can't, there are some things we can control. And so if we, uh, if you would make a decision based on the things that we can control, I think that, that's really important. Um, I've been asked about recruitment and retention of employees and how this decision might impact that. I think it, that's a difficult, uh, question to answer because there are so many factors that play into retention and recruitment. We have a lot of benefits in this district that other districts don't o- offer. Um, we have sick leave bank, we had, have educational reimbursement opportunities, so, um, I, I would say. If I were to have to answer that question, it, it's very limited as far as does it influence retention and recruitment? Very little. Let's see, what else? Um. Any questions for me? I think everything else on my notes has pretty much been addressed.
Thank you, Dr. Lisa. I think you made some very good points. Appreciate that. Jason, you, we haven't given you one opportunity to talk all night.
Real quick, I got a question for her though.
Okay.
I think it's important. Any red flags with the number of the, the amount of turnover you're seeing right now?
So I, we have been tracking turnover, um, pretty strategically. Um, I've even tried to poll the past couple of years, and there is no difference. Um, pre-pandemic to now, even with the number of retirees, and I could, I could, I have it all on a chart for you if you guys would, would want that. Number of, uh, retirees, number of people leaving the district. Um, there doesn't seem to be, um, any change over the course of the last four years or so.
Thank you.
I think that, um, I guess I'm responding to that. Keep that mic.
Maybe I'll just.
Yeah. Because right now Vernal's back in that, um, mode of, um. Every employer on each side of me will give me a dollar or more. So we have them employees that move in the UNA Basin, they jump, and they jump, and they jump because the wages go up and up and up. So I think if we're seeing that, that's a good, that things are holding pretty steady. To me, that tells me that, um. Um, people are pretty happy with our district.
Yeah, we re- we're, we reviewed our salary schedules last year, right when I started, and we're in the process of reviewing event, uh, them again to make sure that we're competitive. We're in the top ten percent of school districts when it comes to pay for our teachers, for our contracted teachers. So, uh, we're staying competitive and we're only anticipating, right now, we're anticipating about the need of about twelve employees ne- next year, next school year, which is. Really good. I mean, there's always some surprises out there, but that's kind of where we're sitting right now.
So I think Rick used to always say it was based on the oil field, moving in and out. When it shuffles out of town, so do a lot of spouses, one side or the other shuffle out with it, so.
Jason, you had something that you'd like to add?
Yeah, um, it's really going to be pretty simple, but I just wanted to add this in. I, um. It actually is going to echo a lot of what Dean, um, brought up, which is. We'll win if we have a united strategy, whatever we go with. I think you look at the data, you look at the student results, we're really talking about marginal, marginal stuff, from my opinion. I mean, I'm not one of the principals, right? I'd say the biggest thing that jumped out to me today was the transportation, um, presentation. And just linking our strat and, and having a stratit- well, let me get.
He said a half million dollars, Jason. That's what perked your ears.
That's what perked my ears. But here's, here's the thing, right? I- if we get too complex with this, we're going to need to do a lot more research. There's also a management, there's a potential management issue when we get too complicated. Um, it's just going to slow us down, bog us down when, when we have too much to worry about, too much that we're thinking about. We're not just knocking out, you know, the, the fastball down the middle, we're thinking curveball outside and we, we just get froze up, right? So, sorry, I'm a baseball person. So that, that's my concern, is what we're talking about. Might not be as big a deal as the execution that, that we give it. And the, the commitment that we give whatever answer this is. I'm actually not passionate one way or the other. Like, to me, everyone's like, oh, this is such a big, big issue to me. It, it's not to me, but what I would say is just. We can win if we're, if we're united and we use strategy, um, and it, and it aligns with what we're trying to do. Um, and just not to be too complex. Or at least if we're going to go a complex route that we, that we vet it and we have really good processes in place to how we're going to manage it and, and knock it out of the park. Because that, that's my only thing that's, that's popped up to me throughout, and I don't really have one way or the other that I care to go. Just as long as we can, we can manage it and kind of follow up with what Dean was saying, let's win with whatever we do, but. Just don't want it to be too, too crazy and too over the top and difficult to, to deal with. That's it.
Thanks, Jason. Um, I'm like Todd. If we get to talking about a plan that involves another four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, half a million dollars in, in the bus garage downstairs. Then it's definitely something that we need to be taking into consideration. That's a, that's a, that's a big chunk. How, how would, um, Mindy like us to throw that at her department or somewhere that, um, you know? I mean, so, yeah, it, it is a, um, it is a big deal, so we'll have to keep that in mind if. The ideas get way creative. Superintendent, it's getting late. Where are we going from here? Do you want me to do kind of like we normally do at the? Just give e- everybody an opportunity to, to close and then we'll be done and go home? Would that be okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you want to go first, Denise? You got anything you want? Don't mean that you need to say anything. Is there anything that you want to say that we, that we haven't?
No, I just appreciate everybody, because I feel like there's been really good, open discussions. It's o- it's okay if we don't agree, just, it helps me keep my eye, mind open and look at all the facts, so I just appreciate everything.
Robin, anything else for this meeting?
I just, I really enjoyed actually getting an opportunity to hear from the teachers and the, sorry, the principals and the directors, thank you. And also the SCC, the School Community Council people that we worked with on those committees. That was great. I, um, I really valued talking to them and being able to interact with them, so thanks for, uh, facilitating that, um, process, yeah.
Todd. I'm kind of with Jason on, on leaning one way or the other. When you look at my family. Multiple families with kids in each school, they all have differing opinions. And so it's great to get to know, you know, the whys and, and some of the things, you know, you're, you're thinking, well, you can split. Our secondary schools, it's going to be costly to split. Great information given tonight. I know I bashed your survey superintendent, which I always will.
That's okay.
But that's just me, and you can, you understand why I do. I, I just, you know, I, I'm, I'm one of those guys that I make dishes, decisions based off. Data and facts. I, I hate to try and do it off of emotions. And so, uh, I appreciate what we've, what your staff has gone through in this process. I, I do think maybe we are putting a. And so, uh, I appreciate what we've, what your staff has gone through in this process, I I do think maybe we are putting a little too much. Emphasis on it, Jason, it's, you know, we're, we're making a a mountain out of a molehill, maybe, you know, because it it's not really changing a lot, test scores. That that should be important to each of us, is it is it increasing or decreasing uh, the ability for our students to achieve and excel? And if we stay with our vision statement, you know, are we actually providing? I think Robin brought up, are we really providing what we've, as a board, come up with, is this is our our vision? And and these are our goals, you know, I. I think if if we spend some time next week going over those, that vision and those goals. And then really try to lay what's before us in front of that, it may help us, because I. I have some things tonight that have really made me think, you know, where we're at, appreciate Superintendent your input on on our. Our mi- or our grade school kids and and the need for for that fifth day. Uh, you know, that's just, we don't want to lose them before we get started, so, so I appreciate it, I. I didn't want to come here tonight with any decision in mind, uh, you know, what way I'm leaning, one way or the other, I always. I see a big difference in in the high school versus the grade school, and I don't, I don't see a good way to to come to a. Consensus there, so, I think we've got our work cut out for us, but thank you, all the staff and and those that participated tonight, a lot of work, thank you.
Um, this is gonna sound like a really funny thing to say, I'll give a little bit of background, I come from a family and I married into a family. That we love to debate politics, we love to argue with each other, it's what we do for fun. So, I actually, to me, you guys feel like family to me, that sounds like a funny thing to say. But I really enjoy it, and I love that we can be open and we can be honest and we can share our opinions and we. But at the end of the day, we love each other and we respect each other for that, and um. I just really appreciate that, because I feel like this board works really well together, I love that, I love that we have different perspectives, I love that we can share our perspectives, I love. That we all have a mind of our own, because I respect people who have a mind of their own, and so I just. I just enjoy the discussion, that might sound really funny, because sometimes it gets difficult, but it's good, it's good, we come to a better place, we learn things when we communicate, I learn new perspectives, I. I learn from it, just all the discussion we've had tonight, all of the people that have come and shared. Ev- from everyone, I've learned some things and that have really been beneficial for me, this has been a really, really hard decision for me. I think I was agonizing over it for the last couple months, I just dreaded this, because it's just hard for me, because I don't. There's no way to please everyone, and there's, there's no way to feel like. I found, yeah, there's no easy answer, right? But at the end of the day, I think I kind of came to where Jason is, is that it's gonna be okay. It's really gonna be okay, at the end of the day, it's gonna be okay, so um, whatever we do, I just hope that we all come together and work together. And support each other, and and really, though, I just really hope that. Once a decision's been made, we all stand behind that decision and work together, whatever it is, whether I'm. Happy with it or I disagree with it, or it doesn't matter, because at the end of the day. We all need to just get together and do what's best for our kids and show them that that they're gonna succeed and. Believe in them and believe in in the decision and go forward.
Jason? You've said your piece? Superintendent?
So, I'm sitting here wondering what next Wednesday's gonna look like. What's that first motion gonna be? And how do we get to consensus? And so, I'm gonna ask the board a pretty simple question. It's, it's um, pretty kosher for a superintendent to make a recommendation. And I've talked to Dave about this, um, I'd be happy to make a recommendation, I feel like I'm on solid ground after this meeting today to do that. Um, I, I don't want to hinder the 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 process, right? Of of the board, um, I don't want to persuade or sway people to go with what I want, right? But I think we have to have a starting place, or I think it could become quite interesting next Wednesday. So, if the board would like a superintendent's recommendation, what I would do is I would go ahead and and I would articulate that in writing. I would send that out to the board um, on Thurs- by Thursday at the latest. Give you an opportunity to look at it, if you wanted to contact each other to talk about that, um, the, you know, it would help facilitate the process come next Wednesday. If if that's what the board wants. The other option is just for someone to make a motion and then kind of, you know, see where it goes.
Board members? I've already had the opportunity to discuss, and I'll tell you what I told him, but I want you guys to say what you'd like.
I think personally that would be great, I would love it if you visited with each of us individually first before you wrote it, just so that you're sure you know where. Maybe it doesn't make a difference, it's your recommendation, what you think is best, but.
That's what I'm gonna tell you, is what I think is best.
Yeah.
But also what's feasible, and and I learned today that one option may not be feasible.
Correct. Denise, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I definitely, I think, let's talk.
Robin?
I'm not sure.
Okay, that's fair. Todd?
Mine was Robin. Yeah, I know we don't agree very often, but I.
These two always need to sit together.
Sorry, sorry, I said that's the new point.
I didn't touch that.
We're almost done, can't get along.
So, I understand, I understand where you're at with the starting point, I think. Because I've, I've been trying to say the same thing, where would you go with this motion, because I I hate to say it, in my mind, I still say there is a better option out there, it's. And maybe you've got some thoughts on on what that better option is, and that's, that I really don't like. The old way or stay in the new way, I I want the better way, I just, that's where my mind really is.
But what's the better way?
And that's, that's what I'm saying, hopefully, hopefully you've got something that kind of gives us the better way.
Yeah, and and you know, what we've been talking about are are. We've, we've been framing things in context of the old way and the new way, right? And and the old way and new way at at whatever levels work best for kids at those levels, but keep in mind, whatever we do, right? The better way happens on the implementation. And and we haven't been in a a real good state of this is permanent, we're moving on indefinitely with this. So, this is a great opportunity for us to make whatever the board decides the very best it can be. Because what I want is I, I want, I want us, I want this to be world-class, I want our kids to have the very best education. I don't, I'm not, I'm not gonna be settled on, uh, you know, marginal or or av- even average. Uh, that's just not who I am as an educator. And and there are some some fundamental things that I believe have to happen if we're gonna get there, and the most important thing. Kids have got to hit secondary school literate, they have to. It is just a non-negotiable, we will never get to world, we won't even get to state class. We won't even get to state average if our kids hit secondary school and they can't read fluently and comprehend. It just, that that's just the bottom line.
Yeah, I remember, I remember uh, some advice back, way back when my kids were young, having to scout. I, I, don't take me wrong, I dislike scouting, but I, I was always involved in it.
You dislike it?
Yeah, I hated the principle of it, but but I was always involved in it. I was always a scout master, you know, I, so I, I just, I just did it. But the three allies is my kids, I would, you know, I I wanted to spend the time with my kids, and I remember a, one of my leaders. In the state said, if you continue to take your boys. On the camps with you when they're eight or nine, or they won't have anything to look forward to when they are a teacher, you're, you're advanced at scouting. And, you know, as an explorer, if you've already done everything, you've already done it, so, having said that. Right now, we're giving them, the grade school kids out, saying opportunities, we're hoping that this is a benefit to a high school kid. There is a possibility to make it different, don't get me wrong, I I I know the survey says, but it's so close, but. I still think there's a possibility to do it different and and really excite the kids about the future of school. I want to stay in school because if I get to do something, I feel like I'm. That's what I think, I'm. My kids were all able to scout, even though they had needs, right?
Okay, where are we at, though? Back to the question was, the question was.
Yeah, do we?
Do we want to recommend?
I'll accept a recommendation based on, uh, based on a phone call, I I think if he, if he'll call each one of us, I I think that gives. That gives us an opportunity.
Sure.
Todd, your mic is off.
I'm, I'm talking now, so.
It's all right, we didn't want them to catch up anyway, so it's okay.
I didn't give my, I didn't want my scout thing to go outside.
I think we bored everybody to sleep an hour and a half ago. Superintendent?
Jeff's the one texting me.
Oh, not J F E S.
Jeffs, don't note that scout thing, okay?
Superintendent, will you give us a recommendation, please?
Yes, I will, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll make an independent phone call to each board member. Um, I would like to get something in writing, so you have time to think about it, and I I'm gonna tell you this right now, you won't offend me if you don't go with my recommendation. Um, I, I'm perfectly okay with that. Uh, but I think that it gives us a good starting point, then you know where I stand, which I think that's important, right? And uh, and then we'll let the process, we'll let the process work. And I I will tell you in in return that uh, you've heard a lot of people, principals, directors, indicate that we're gonna make. Whatever you decide, we're gonna make it work, and and we we will. Uh, I do think there's a good, better, best, I believe that, I also think that there's always a third alternative, there's always a compromise, there's always something. In the middle that works well for everybody, and so, let's, let's see if we can find uh, that. If you've ever read uh, Stephen Covey's Eighth Happen, right? It's all about that third alternative, and uh, so let's, let's see what we can make happen. A win-win, yep, absolutely, so let's see if we can find that and and move forward with with that kind of enthusiasm, that it's a win-win for everybody.
Board members, I promise you, I've worked enough with the superintendent, when he tells you that if we don't pick his plan. That he will still hit the ground running and make it work, he's being honest. They um, if that's not the will of the board and you vote to go a different direction, he will leave, we will leave here with him in, behind us. And um, all shooting for the stars, um, I want to thank everybody that's here uh, ten thirty at night. Um, all of your colleagues will expect you to be bright-eyed and bushy-tailed in the morning, you'll get no credit for. Um, board members, um, I thoroughly expect next Wednesday that it will not be a unanimous decision. What we decide, I think it's our job as elected officials. That if I'm the odd man out, that I've voted a different way than the rest of you, that when we leave this board meeting, we're united. And I go home and I tell my family that the best thing that could happen for the district happened, and we're all together and we move forward, and that way we will be successful. And I think that, I think that's our job, so I think we all need to pre- um, prepare for that. For next Wednesday night meeting, and that's the reason there's a five-member board, and it's not an even-member board, there. Will be a decision made next Wednesday night. I appreciate all of you and all the hours that you've spent going over surveys and educating yourselves. And all the work that has been done from, clear through the district, I don't even know where it starts, but everywhere from, as you can tell, from. Foods has been thinking about their um, transportation, um, teachers, aides, um. My mother-in-law's a lunch lady at the at the high school, and they've been thinking and preparing, and she's been asking me questions that I didn't have. Answers to, um, and so, clear through our whole district, we appreciate everyone, um, we're gonna get this decision made. Then make the best of it and hit the ground running and move on to the the next thing, and I'm excited about that also. You okay, Superintendent?
Absolutely.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting.
Todd, you made a motion, second it?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Board members, thank you, sorry that uh, it was a long night, so.
I think everyone.
Thank you for your service, so, you guys are awesome.